Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the December, Tuesday, December tenth, twenty thirteen, meeting of the Amherst Palom Regional School Committee. I'd like to welcome all of you present in the room. Thank you for coming out on such a cold, icy evening, really testimony to your commitment to the children of the district. I really appreciate, we all really appreciate your being here. I also want to welcome those of you who are watching at home, or who will be streaming us at some point in the future, welcome as well. There are agendas on the table in the rear of the room, if you haven't already picked one up. There are also, there is also a sheet which outlines our meeting procedures, including public comment, requirements or policy, and those are also available on the table in the back of the room as well. I would ask for members of the committee to recognize that there are warrants coming around. Please make sure that you sign those before the conclusion of the meeting, before you leave for the evening. Also want to ask you to take a look at the agenda, and to also review the summary sheet that Superintendent Garrick has provided us with the, actually four bullet points this evening, there are no gifts. So, we're looking at superintendent's update, device presentation, the discipline data plan, and the school committee resolution to MASC, which will be at the end of our agenda. So, the summary, the agenda summary outlines what needs to be done to meet to those items, as well as a period of time for whatever action you need to take. I know the opinion, unless corrected by any member of the school committee who may do so, that those times allocated are sufficient. If there is anyone who feels that we need to allocate more time, please say so. If not, then I will open the floor up for public comment. I want to remind members of the audience that we have the school committee allocated fifteen minutes for a school for a public comment, judging from the capacity audience, there may be a number of people who wish to speak. I want to honor and respect every individual who comes before us, to share their views and thoughts about whatever is currently on their mind. So, we want to make sure everyone has enough time to speak, with the most of that fifteen minute parameter. So, I am going to ask people to step forward, state your name, present us with your public comment, and I'm going to ask you to please do it.
...with no nuts will cause malnourishment when there are many other protein sources available. Statistically, the rates of school-based anaphylaxis have gone down because of current school-based interventions, but the risk still remains unless the food is completely removed. This brings up the question, then, of why don't we remove all potential allergens from schools? Peanut allergy, for unknown reasons, is the one food that has doubled in prevalence in the past decade, and starting here would make sense, given its commonness. Moreover, eighty-five percent of children with milk, egg, soy, and wheat allergies will outgrow it, while only twenty-five, twenty percent of peanut allergic children and nine percent of tree allergic children, tree nut allergic children, will outgrow their allergies. I would add also that the, the information on seriousness of allergies and likelihood of anaphylactic reaction supports that peanut and tree nut are two of the more serious allergens. She adds, "There is some emerging data to show that nut-free and nut-banned schools are not necessarily much safer. These studies have not taken into account that these nut-free banned schools likely attract higher numbers of allergic children, and therefore allergic reactions will be higher. But more importantly, these studies are very new and have not taken into consideration the social and emotional needs of the allergic child. Therefore, if at all possible, we kindly ask that you consider your decision carefully. Food allergies in children are on the rise, and as a result, these issues will not go away and need to be addressed. We hope that you will oblige our request for Mason and other nut-allergic children to have a safe school experience with no contact or ingestion exposure to nuts. Thank you very much." And I have copies of this letter to share with the committee, so that you can look at it in your own time as well. But I felt that, given some of the opinions that have been shared in town, I thought that she spoke to some of the more relevant and serious issues that have been brought up. And I just want to add to that, that I am growing, it's getting more and more difficult for me to hear people talk about how likely it is that a child will die of an anaphylactic reaction, partly because they're talking about potentially my child, partly because if one child dies of something that was completely preventable, and it's your child, then it doesn't matter how many others there were and weren't. And partly because there's a lot that happens to children with food allergies when they're exposed to an allergen before death, and I don't think people are considering that it is not a matter of a child being fine or a child dying. There are stages in anaphylaxis, and each one of them is, is difficult for the child, and many of them lead to hospitalization and scary interventions, which are difficult for both the allergic child and his or her classmates to, to deal with. So, instead of focusing on the likelihood of a child dying, I'd like to see the focus on protecting all of the children in the community, and I don't think that we choose as a school community which things we protect children from. We have people on the playground watching for safety all the time. We have extensive policies in place now for school evacuation processes or lockdown procedures. The likelihood of a school shooting in Amherst is also very small, and we're preparing our children for that. We prepare them for fires. We have pickup procedures in elementary school that are pretty exhaustive, and the likelihood of them being kidnapped is also small. I would just like to suggest that we, we can and should prepare ourselves to protect children for all possible risks, not just one of the...
Thank you very, thank you very, very much. Number two. Please state your name, and speak into the microphone.
Okay, I'll do my best. My name is Samah Joffrey. I have children at Fort River, and forgive the readiness, I'll try to minimize it. But I'm here to speak also in support of an inclusive policy to keep children with life-threatening allergies safe. My children do not have allergies, but my family has complied with nut-free policies and practices since my oldest was in preschool, so for about seven years. And, you know, it's becoming a fact of life, and as she gave you the statistics, it's going to be increasingly a fact of life for many children of their generation. As long as children are not in control of their environment while they're at school, the adults in charge have the responsibility of ensuring their safety. So, saying that they can just, you know, take responsibility and take care of themselves, and they can teach them, is just not going to happen if they can't just leave the room whenever they want to. The school-wide policy has given clarity and empowered the staff to enforce nut-allergy-aware practices. What we had before, when it applied just to one classroom or one, or the grade level from time to time, depending on the affected children, left a lot of room for inconsistency and uncertainty on the part of the staff, which then affected the children, who were even more uncertain about how to behave around food. I believe the administration did their due diligence by obtaining the facts and consulting experts, including those among the staff, and they've also, I believe from reading the minutes from prior meetings, consulted the district attorney's office prior to implementing this new practice. Since the school committee took up this after the fact, there's been a sense that public opinion will determine the outcome. And my question to you is, is that true? I hope that at least that question is clarified tonight, because open debate is all well and good, but safety and inclusion should not be determined by a majority vote of the public, or worse, who is better at getting out the vote. The rights of the minority are not up to the majority. It is up to the school administration to determine how best to discharge their responsibility towards all children. After all, it's their mandate and liability that's on the line. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Please state your name, and speak into the microphone, please.
Hi, my name is Ray LaRaja. I'm, I'm here to talk about the nut-banned policy. I have experience as a policy analyst for several years at the local and both at the federal level, and I'm a political science professor. I want to start by saying, we should always be looking for ways to protect all our children. I'm sympathetic to parents who deal with the reality of their children having very severe allergies. That said, I do not think the nut ban should be part of the guideline policy. I have three quick points to make. First, I, I haven't seen any evidence that a totally ban actually lowers the threat, even while it affects many other children and families who abide by the ban. I haven't found any studies showing whether the nut ban reduces the incidence of allergic reactions in schools, and in fact, one study I saw showed that eighty percent of reactions occur outside even the cafeteria, in doing things like crafts and touching things. And we know that even before students show up for school, they're, they have nut products on their hands. So, before jumping into this difficult and costly policy, I think we should have proof that it really works with evidence-based. The other thing is, there are probably other policies that might just work as well, and they don't require the kind of heavy monitoring I think we're talking about. The emphasis should be on training school personnel to, to recognize allergic reactions and take actions vigorously, and we should provide EpiPens right on-site, not just in nurse's office, not just requiring the students to bring them, and encourage the washing of hands as much as possible. I see your guidelines are encouraging these things. I think we should really emphasize these, which are proven to be more effective. And then, the last thing I want to say is, I think this policy, in a way, this is the most difficult thing, encourages scofflaws, and this is what I mean. Enforcement is really difficult, and it's costly, and it concerns me that many students are ignoring this policy, especially in the middle and high schools. You know, my children tell me kids are always bringing bars to school, and in fact, it was embarrassing today, and I won't mention which child it is of my children, they, they were making a peanut butter and jelly sandwich and bringing it to school this morning. I said, "What are you doing?" And I had to take that away, and they said, "Well, everyone does it, and no one's enforcing it." And I don't think this dynamic is good. It's not good for students with allergies, certainly, and it's not good for the broader efforts to kind of instill this respectable behavior and good citizenship for the community. I mean, if, if children think they can disregard a policy because it's a nuisance, or because they think it's stupid, or whatever, I mean, how are they going to react to other rules that we ask them to abide by that really do serve the community and the common good? I'm not saying this doesn't serve the community and the common good, but it's not, it's one of those policies that really encourages type of behavior, so I'd like you to consider that. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jimmy Lee from Amherst. I'm also here to speak about my support to, to nut restrictions. I support the nut restrictions in Amherst public schools. Initially, it was out of compassion. My son has always had classmates with nut allergies since he started kindergarten. I felt so bad that this kid had to sit at a separate table, and also cannot be included in enjoying some of classroom celebration treats. I also have a friend who has a kid with severe nut allergy. I just cannot imagine what it would be like sending your kid with life-threatening allergy armed with an EpiPen to school and live your day through until your kid comes home safe and sound. Also, it was out of fear, that I just don't want my family's carelessness to be responsible for any fatal accidents in school. Now it's at the center of the heated public debate in our town. I've tried to listen to the other side and see whether I'm biased, or whether I'm missing anything that could be more important. I've read letters to the editor and the local papers. I've read every single comments and the petition signed by those who oppose the nut restrictions. Although I totally understand that many people think this decision is a drastic change at the cost of mass population who have nothing to do with nut allergies, and also I can see that many feel that we didn't have sufficient public discussion before implementing the policy. However, their arguments were hardly convincing. Actually, it's quite baffling and even shocking to read some of what people said. When you're implying your kids' right to eat nuts at school are as equal as another kid's life, I get speechless at your lack of empathy. When you're interpreting the nut restrictions as the message that Oreos, Cheetos, and cheeses are healthier than nuts, I get speechless at your lack of common sense. You totally lose your credibility in your argument, because you don't even understand what this is about. First, it doesn't seem to be reasonable that we don't have any other affordable alternative sources for protein other than nuts. The nut restrictions do not dictate one to change his or her entire diet. It's not like stripping an entire food group from your meal just because you cannot eat nut products. We're talking about adjustments and cooperation for six and a half hours a day, Monday through Friday, only during the school year. Having one meal and one snack a day with alternative protein source won't hurt at all for the majority of normal kids who don't need any medical intervention. Although I understand some families struggle with picky eaters who only eat the same food, I don't think anybody would dare to say my kid's favorite peanut butter and jelly sandwich and granola bar are more important than someone else's, like. Then another point, a false sense of security. Do you really think that kids with nut allergies and their families would let their guard down even when the schools are declared as nut-free? Do you really think the school administrators stopped training teachers and staff how to read the labels and how to deal with allergic reactions? Do you really think the teachers and school staff would stop being vigilant and stop monitoring? Then would nut-free tables would stigmatize, stigmatize and isolate the nut-allergic kids, not to mention constant exposure to allergens between nut-free zones and nut-allow zones in the school building be able to establish a true sense of security? It's about life and death to them, and we just try to do our best to minimize the risk. There won't be any one hundred percent guaranteed safety, no matter what kind of risk or illness we're talking about. When grown-ups are tangled up with their own agendas and politics and lack of compassion and selfishness, wisdom borrowed from simple-minded children might shed a light. Nut-free tables, it seems to me that that's the only alternative that people against the nut, against the policy are suggesting. So, I told my eight-year-old son that some people are against the nut restrictions, and they think nut-free tables would be good enough, and I asked him if he agrees. You know what he said? He said it won't be safe for his friends with nut allergies, because kids sitting on the nut-allowed table might spit something and will fly and land on the nut-free table. It might sound a bit far-fetched and not highly likely, but what he's really seeing is that there could be any inadvertent contact between the nut-free and nut-allowed tables. Another important point that my son raised was that the nut-allergic kids won't be able to sit with their friends that they want to sit and eat with. He kept on going like, "Mom, the bathrooms won't be safe because it's not nut-free," and then the school bus. He mentioned the kids eat all kinds of food on the bus when they're not supposed to do. Although he might understand other complicated factors such as politically correctness, the socioeconomic implications of a jar of peanut butter, he has a point, a simple point. We have to do something more than just nut-free tables. Some people who are not happy with the policy were sympathetic with nut-allergic kids and their families, while expressing the need to check whether there is no better way to do it, while others were very insensitive, downplaying the danger purely based on the numbers and probabilities in calculating how many years it takes to save how many kids.
Excuse me, I'm, I'm sorry, I've given you twice as much time, I am really...
I'm almost done.
Um, would you, before you finish, if you please make a copy of that letter that you're reading, available to the superintendent, if you can make it available to the rest of the committee, please.
Sure.
And please try to wrap it up, because I'm really sorry.
Okay.
There's a number of other people who wish to speak.
Um, okay. I'm not even sure whether the numbers are correct. They also argued that the children with nut allergies need to learn to live in the real world. Do you think we're creating some kind of fantasy world for the nut-allergic kids by trying to overprotect them? How can it be more weird than waking up scared to die at school? How can it be more weird than an eight-year-old kid asking his mom if he will make it to his adulthood or die as a kid because of his allergy? I want to say that real world is so cruel and harsh that it takes a whole community where we care and help each other. I read a letter written by Renee Baloo, a seventh grader in South Deerfield who suffered from life-threatening peanut allergy. What she said keeps ringing in my ear. All I'm asking is for students and teachers to try to keep in state for six hours a day. Now, I strongly and confidently support the nut restrictions in Amherst public schools, not just out of compassion and fear, but also because I believe that there are good reasons to do it even for a parent with allergy-free kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, thank you very much. I am going to have to ask, and again, it's difficult for me to do so, but if you could please stay within that three-minute block of time, it would be really appreciated. There are a number of people who wish to speak this evening, and we want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to do so before the committee gets on with its, its business that it must conduct this evening. Uh, yes, go ahead, please. State your name, and please speak into the microphone.
Hello, I'm Brenda Bushhouse, and I want to echo some of the comments that my colleague, Ray LaRaja, made. I'm a policy scholar as well, and I have dear friends with severe nut-allergic children, and I'm completely sympathetic. But as a policy scholar, what I'm really concerned about is having a policy that's effective. And what I see here is a flawed policy process and a flawed policy. I didn't see the report from the Wellness Committee. We've asked for it, we still have not seen it. It is not available, as far as I can tell. I want to see that report, I want to read the research, because like my colleague Ray, I'm reading other resources. The CDC is not recommending a nut ban, it, it recommends being vigilant. And, and what I'm concerned about is what I'm hearing from my, my children, is that there's not only, not particularly good policing going on about nuts at the nut-free table. Uh, so, I'm very concerned about the safety of kids with nut allergies if we say we have a nut ban, and then we're not enforcing it. So, whenever I teach public policy, we talk about the intended effects and the actual effects. The intended, in fact, effects for this policy are phenomenal. We absolutely want to protect those children with nut allergies, absolutely. What I question is what the actual effects are going to be, because what I'm afraid is that we've got a policy that's a guidance, that means that kids are still, who make their own lunch, are still making peanut butter and jelly sandwiches, that we've got kids with, sometimes even if you're the most vigilant parent, there's some nuts in a granola bar that you didn't even realize were in there, that we're trying to do our best and we don't. Or, what's even more scary, is that the adults in the schools become less vigilant. I'm really concerned about that. So, what I would encourage is that we get the research out there that the Wellness Committee based their decisions on. I think there should have been, from the school committee's perspective, there should have been way more discussion about this before the policy was passed. Way more discussion. And this kind of airing of concerns, so that then we could have had parents talking and finding a policy that worked, I would actually be completely in favor of a policy in which it's banned in the elementary school, because those kids need to be protected. They can't make those decisions for themselves, but eventually, a child has to learn how to live in a nut world. Okay, so maybe at high school. We would say that child needs to be able to, to take the actions necessary to protect themselves. Okay, so maybe a graduated policy, I'd be completely in favor of, but this kind of blanket policy that went out before, my head was spinning, before I even realized it was happening, I think was just bad policy decisions and needs to be seriously be considered. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please. Please state your name, and speak into the microphone.
Jean Sherlock. So, I know tonight we're going to hear about the discipline report, that's what I think I heard, I saw it online, and I, what we're going to hear about is the suspensions by ethnic, racial group, and one of the things I want to bring up to remind people that there's a lot of discipline going on that's not related to suspensions. And I think it's really important that we think about how children are being disciplined in other ways, and that we devise a way to keep track of that. Two kids at the middle school, I'm going to give examples of the discipline that was imposed on them. One of them's on an IEP, he's mixed race, Afro-Euro heritage, and already has like a negative relationship with this teacher who disciplined him. The teacher, he's in a classroom with this teacher, and the teacher has way too many students in the classroom, it's a special, I'm trying to keep it somewhat anonymous. But this teacher was at, on lunch duty, and the child walked up to throw his trash away, and she reminded him to recycle, and he smirked at her and didn't recycle, he threw everything in the trash, and she wrote him up. He ended up in lunch detention for that. That's not PBIS, as I've studied it and understand it, okay? You don't send, and especially in light of who this teacher was to this student, and this student being on an IEP and having a behavioral plan, okay? This kid is, that's creating a hostile environment, and that's harassment of this child in this case. My grandson, also biracial, Cambodian and European, never, has never been in trouble. He's in eighth grade at the middle school. Got sent to lunch detention for dropping his backpack on the floor, okay? How is this PBIS? You go, go to the Quiet Learning Center for lunch detention. Where's, where's the levels of intervention there? My son, who was graduated from the high school, Cambodian-American, never in trouble, like no detentions or anything, has trouble showing up to school on time, but that's about it. Comes out of cooking class, hands a cookie in a, in a baggie to his friend, another Asian, and gets sent to the office, they suspect that he's passing drugs, right? Gets searched, I'm never called, never informed. Now, this never shows up on the radar, this isn't a suspension, but this is discipline, this is harassment, and it's creating a hostile environment for kids of color, because they're the ones who are subjected to this. There's, there was just a recent incident at the high school, I can't go into detail about it, but three kids were involved, the white kid was sent back to class, and the other two kids were searched, and they weren't white. This is the stuff that I'm concerned about. This isn't going to show up in the suspension data, but this is a level of discipline that's happening every single day in all the schools, because we're hearing from a lot of parents, a lot of people are upset about it, and we'd really like it to change. Now, I want to connect this to kids on IEPs a little bit, because I know that Ms. Brady's going to disaggregate some of that data for the kids on IEPs. And I understand that it's important to see how the kids on IEPs are being subjected to this, but we need to not, we need to remember that a lot of the kids are not just on IEPs, but they're also kids of color, right? And they're, so they're getting a double whammy. They're male, or they're poor, the, the things that kids get in more trouble, that are, have those aspects. And I think one of the problems in Amherst is that we think we're living in a post-racial society, because I would... Because I was at an IEP meeting once where the parent brought up the fact that perhaps the teacher who was disciplining her child way more than he deserved to be disciplined might have some issues with race in class. And there was an audible gasp in the room by the staff. They acted like, the one white woman reached over to the African-American in the room and said, "Oh, I'm so sorry you needed to hear that. You had to hear that." And I'm sitting there thinking, "Did we say something to insult the black guy in the room?" Yeah, we did. In Amherst, it's considered racist to bring up race in class. I'm just gonna end this with a, a quote from Assault on Kids, Roberta Alquist. "In this country, it continues to be segregationist along class, linguistic, and racial lines. It continues to be culturally, institutionally, and many instances, interpersonally racist, even with and/or as a consequence of the election of a black president. Yet the term 'race' is absent from these practices. Indeed, the very mention of 'race' is considered by many to be racist. This segregation of words facilitates the continued segregation of people since identifying racist oppression is now considered racist. The mainstream dominant culture media reinforce this segregation with the mantra that we live in a post-racial society and now can be co- colorblind." I liked that I heard people at the, where we talked about the district improvement plan saying they were happy that we can say the words. I hope we can all begin to say the words and not be afraid to admit that we have some issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. O'Connor, I think he was-
I think this is the numbers for that stuff.
I think that's what I messed up. Mr. O'Connor, please do next. Sorry, I misnumbered you. Vince O'Connor, um, Summer Street in Amherst. So I have a couple of, you know, a number of quick issues that I'd like to address. Uh, the first is a comment from a, a recent graduate still in college about the trimester system. Completely, like, out of any context that I've had said, one of the great things to her is that somebody that I had actually previously never dealt with and so forth, said she was a graduate of Amherst Regional. The great thing about the trimester system is being able to have only four or five, um, actual substantive classes to focus on during the trimester. That was, and so I haven't ever heard that comment addressed before in any discussion. And I thought I'd pass it on because I, it really, it had an impact on me. I said, "Wow, this is, this is a way to look at it that is, um, good to me." And I thought it was a really interesting insight because certainly when you go to college, you don't take eight subjects in a semester. So the, the second, a second thing I, I want to talk about is, maybe following up on the previous speaker. My concern, uh, that, uh, in the past, that, uh, that ELL students and s- other students in the middle school have been, received much more encouragement than other students in the middle school to go to Smith Vocational and check it out. And I personally know of one student who did choose to go to Smith Vocational, and by the, by her sophomore and junior years was desperately unhappy, trying to figure out a way to get back to Amherst Regional and never did get back. And so I, I want to encourage the school committee to make sure that certain students in the, in the, in the middle school are not being targeted for diversion to Smith Vocational or any other vocational school. One, it costs a lot of money to the school district, and two, I think it is a horrendously, uh, as, this is a Latina, um, this is a horrendously bad policy, and I think it deserves oversight from the school committee. Um, the third thing is, uh, with regard to, um, to college advising. I think we, I think the school committee needs to take a serious look at the need for low-income kids, kids who play sports and who want to continue to play sports in college and so forth, to have, um, college advising that meets, that is, meets their needs. I mean, I went to a, a college athletics program in this very room and got, was told inaccurate information that I, I called the UMass Athletic Department the next day, found out the accurate information, provided it to, to the person who had given it out. But we need to have, um, accurate information being pro- provided to, um, students who seek the help of the, the college guidance folks here at the, at the high school. And we need to really make an effort, um, with regard to low-income students, um, some of whom may be eligible for, uh, for programs and, and, um, and, um, acad- um, financial aid or can avoid having certain incomes being used that might actually really help them pay for college. So I just want to say, this is an important thing. You don't get out of poverty unless you have at least two years of college. And, um, having certain students being directed to certain types of colleges and being given inaccurate information and so forth is not helpful. And this, this program needs to be thoroughly examined to make sure that the needs of every group of students who go through this high school are being met. Thank you. Thank you very, very much. Um, I think we had everyone who wanted, did I miss anyone in the audience? I want to, on behalf of the school committee, thank all of you who spoke. Really appreciate you coming forward and expressing your views on a really wide range of issues. Thank you very, very much. Um, moving along with the agenda, um, we're going to, um, ask, um, the, um, subcommittee updates, and I'm going to move to, uh, the budget subcommittee and ask, uh, Mr. Hood if you could give us an update on, um, actions taken by that subcommittee.
Sure. Before I do though, if I could just do the AEF representative-
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, no problem.
Uh, this Thursday, uh, December 12th is Valley Gives Day, so I would urge all of you to consider giving to the Amherst Education Foundation on that day. On there's green slips on the table in the back giving the details about that, or go to amhersteducationfoundation.org. Um, for the budget subcommittee update, we met today before the meeting, and we discussed our capital plan, how to, how to work on that. Uh, capital means, uh, investment and maintenance and big items that the reading has to talk about, whereas for the elementary schools, that's talked about more at the town level. Uh, we talked about the budget. The first, uh, preliminary budget will be out in January, so the first meeting's in January for when we will first discuss that on the committee. Uh, we discussed OPEB, um, and we're gonna be bringing that forward to the committee to discuss sometime later this year, probably January or February. And finally, we talked about our per-student cost versus the state average in other towns, and we tried to start digging into that a little bit. Our next meeting is December 17th at 5:30 in the library here.
Thank you, Rick. Any questions? We'll put them in the committee. Yeah, come on.
You also, uh, attend to Amherst Media and the OPEB.
Uh, just at Amherst Media, they're, you know, their big thing is that they have plans to build a new building on a lot that is kind of near the train station. Um, my understanding is that they, they, um, they have a loan to buy the land, and I believe someone's gonna build the building for them, and then gra- then they'll go through a fundraising, uh, effort to try to pay for that building all the time.
Any other questions? Um, moving down the list then, um, there's nothing new to report from the la- our last meeting on the collaborative. Um, in January, the Board of Governors, uh, will be sitting down with the finalists and interviewing them. Um, I'm hoping that by the 14th of January, I'll have more news to report on that. Um, moving on to the regional school district planning board. Uh, this past Thursday evening, um, the board met for some three hours and arrived at, uh, by unanimous vote, uh, the memo, the, um, motion that I'm going to read to you, a copy of which will be sent to, um, Chris Lynch for some guidance from her and the Department of Education regarding their views on whether or not the substance and content of this motion that was voted on unanimously, uh, will allow us to go forward. Uh, the motion reads as follows. Um, "To amend the current seven through twelve agreement to a pre-K twelve agreement with the option that one of the existing four towns can remain seven twelve as long as that town is not Amherst. And that the town that remains seven through twelve has the option to become a pre-K twelve member within a specified period of time. And that the town that remains seven twelve can negotiate with the regional school committee regarding shared superintendency services for their pre-K three-six school." Um, I'm going to ask other members, uh, of the regional school district planning board who were in attendance, uh, Thursday evening, to share with, uh, the rest of the board here as well as the audience, um, their, um, perspective on the, um, the motion that, um, I just read to you and, um, other actions that were taken on the, um, this past Thursday. Kathy?
Yeah, I am the, uh, school committee rep representative on the board for Amherst. And, um, I have to say that going into the meeting, um, this was not the result I expected. Um, uh, but I am very pleased with the result, um, for Amherst. Um, I feel like this is a board that has worked incredibly hard over the last two years now, um, to, to come to this place. And, um, when I think about it for Amherst students, um, I'm excited because I think this could very possibly offer, um, uh, a lot to Amherst schools and to Amherst students. And, um, uh, I think Leverett, Shrewsbury, and Pelham have a lot to bring to our elementary schools. Um, and they were just, um, so, and I also, I'm, I'm cautious because, um, this is something that hasn't been done before and been approved by DESI, um, which is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. This particular model, it's called a hybrid model. Um, but I'm, you know, we've, we've done a lot of things, um, on this board that haven't really been done before, so I'm encouraged. And, um, I, I encourage all of Amherst residents and residents of the entire, um, school community to pay close attention because there's gonna be, I, I hope, a lot going on over the next several months.
Thank you, Kathy. Kathy.
I have to echo the sentiment, you know, when I went to that meeting, the result was different than I expected. I'm the, um, representative from Pelham. Um, like has been said, we've been working for, uh, a good long time, understanding the nuances of this issue, the pros and the cons, the benefits and the compromises that would be necessary for regionalization for each of the towns. Um, and ultimately, our decision for this amendment, uh, uh, was, was really to make it so that the regional school board or this, uh, 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 school plan that we have now for the middle to the high school would expand and make it so that, um, three towns could be part of it. I kind of echo a sentiment that was, that was made at the meeting, and that is that, um, this adds, or, or the, 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 the complexity of this school arrangement not being defined sort of goes against the possibility of its success. It's just a taller order, not to say it won't be successful, but a much taller order to put before all of our voters, um, so many variables. How governance would be worked out would be variable, depending on what towns are in and what towns are out. How, you know, our finances would be would be variable. And that we spent this considerable amount of effort and time, and have come to the point where the least thing that we can agree on is just, these are the minimum towns we want in. Is some movement, but it's, it's, it's glacial movement. It's glacial movement, and, um, the prospects of it being successful are not, you know, um, 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 no. But, um, we, we, we still have plenty of nuances and issues to get through. And if it's taken us this much effort to get to just which towns might be in it, it makes me, uh, concerned if we might not, uh, want to find all of the good efficiencies and ways of saving monies in other ways. That doesn't mean that I don't support regionalization. It means I'm, I'm realistic about, um, I'm jumping through the hoops you jumped through. That being said, our last meeting for me also was a, a, a shocker. Also was a shocker, but it was an incremental step. And just watch how our work unfolds for the next one. And also, the last thing I want to add is, um, really what it did was, was put a lot more work tw- for this particular board, which I'm chagrined because I actually sit on this board too. So all the work that we've, we've spent the last two years doing on the last board would have to be repeated by people at this board can appoint, which could be us, which means we'd be doing the same work again to get to just the next glacial step. And I'm just, um, overcome with, um, what, what, what they call telling the truth. That's, that's a hard road to hoe. That's a hard thing to look at, but that's what we are.
Thank you. Michael.
Sorry to follow. Um, so I'm the representative for Shrewsbury, and I think the, the theme is, I would agree, I did not expect that outcome is, as well. Um, I'd say for Shrewsbury, we were pleasantly surprised, and, um, my takeaway is that I think the two years of working together through lots of detail and, um, the relationship building of ups and downs, you know, there is, plus the fact that we're voting on six years of being together at the seven twelve, and I think that's something we talked about at the beginning, but, you know, when we think about the four towns coming together in a different configuration, the baseline is the four towns have worked together very effectively at this level. Um, and so, push comes to shove, I think that that sort of creates a foundation where you push a little harder to figure out if you can come to common ground. Um, I will say it's incremental, um, but what I'm personally excited about, having worked on this for probably seven years, is just that although it's incremental, it's a change in the status quo, and it's a change towards something closer. And I think that, given what we all know about what, representing our towns, we're trying to figure out what our towns need, um, and they're not always aligned, so incremental is maybe the best we can do, but we're going in the right direction, so I think that's good. Um, and I think just to echo what Trevor said, just for the, the audience's sake, um, there is a lot of hard work, as came up a lot devil is in the details, um, and really understanding the details and how that plays out and that spells success in coming to a regional agreement we can agree on, um, or not. So I think it's a milestone that we unanimously agree to something and sort of have a vision. Um, but there has been a lot of hard work in the last couple of years, just figuring it all out, and it is massively complex, um, so to sort of get there. I don't know if you've heard it, but we're still young yet, so, you know, who's that for danger? So that's your comment, Tom.
Thank you, Michael. Yep?
Yeah, uh, just a couple of questions. Um, so I'm glad you guys unanimously voted on something, um, but it, it's a little bit confusing to me. And, and the point about this one town, I guess I wonder why that one town can't be named, but, but that's, that's really beside the point. The second is this idea of, and I'm not, I don't have the language exactly, but can negotiate with regional school committee about contracting for district services? I, I, I don't really know what that means. Does that mean that if and when a pre-K twelve region forms that Shrewsbury could then potentially contract if the new regional school committee, they could negotiate with the new regional school committee to potentially contract? Is that what that means?
If I may, um, first, first of all, um, I, I would hope that we could refrain from talking about specific towns because, um, as a representative from Leverett, um, one of the three representatives from Leverett, um, as, as much as I personally favor regionalization pre-K through twelve for all four towns, I, I would be lying if I thought that I could, um, guarantee a pro-Leverett vote. I can't do that. And so I think what we were trying to do with the language, you know, to refer to my, my colleagues, is create language that would create pathways for any of the towns to, um, find a way to perhaps overcome some local objections over time and have a pathway to join pre-K through twelve at some point in time. So I, I think the language was kept purposely vague to allow any town that might find itself on the outside at some point, um, to, um, eventually- on the outside at some point to eventually have a relatively easy path inside. But I defer to my colleagues and their interpretation of that.
So, there are two different items in the memo. One is that a town to be not named, not being Amherst, who did not join the pre-K twelve region initially, would have an easy path to join the pre-K twelve district. So, that's one item. The second item was around a potential shared superintendency with the one town that remained out of the pre-K twelve for their pre-K six school. And so, the language is such that in the future, if we have a pre-K twelve region, that unnamed school could negotiate with that current regional school committee to see if they could negotiate a shared superintendent. So, that was my understanding of the memo. Correct me if I'm missing anything.
I think you're correct. Just a couple of filling in the blank stuff, picking on the obvious theme. One of the surprises for Shrewsbury was actually on the town who didn't shut up, be named, and tie it to Harry Potter that we actually...
I know, that's exactly what I'm saying.
You know, that we got less humanized, and I think to kids' point, because we've been the one who, for a while, have been saying, we're not sure it works for our town and we're not sure we would vote for it, but how can, as a group, we go forward? And, you know, the fact that Leverett was articulating that in the meeting and saying it could be any one of our four towns was quite liberating, I think, at the beginning of the meeting, so.
It could be in one of three of the four towns.
Right. Well, Amherst could still not vote for it for a variety of reasons. But just understanding that we're trying to figure out something that the populace would support in the majority for all the towns. So, that was, I think, so it was less about protecting Shrewsbury, although that was appreciated, but an acknowledgement that we're not all clear who's going to vote for what. And I think Catherine totally got it right in terms of just sort of echoing back to a bunch of years ago when the regionalization discussion came out from Boston, I don't know, five years ago, whatever, there were like the four or five Cs, if you can remember that far back. But one was cohesion. And so, the idea was even if we were creating a hybrid where all four towns weren't part of a pre-K twelve, that another intermediary step would be to share the superintendency again, sort of building closer ties. So, you know, the operations and the leadership would be more consistent with the idea of sort of creating a pathway to closer relationships. So, that was part of the goal.
A couple of quick things. One, I'm wondering, has the letter gone out to DESI? If so, has it gone out as a regional letter under what auspices has it gone out proposing this hybrid model with opt-in possibility? Secondly, I'm wondering if the sense that the DESI grant we received and the consultant study, basically a waste of money. And thirdly, what is the other basic takeaway from this in terms of, you know, the whole dancing around for two years to get to where we are now in terms of going straight away to this body being the body that vets this, makes a proposed agreement, gets it out to the towns, up or down, and we move on to see where we are?
I'm going to, there are three questions that you posed to members of the planning board, and I'm going to go around in the order of the hands that I saw in the response. I'm not sure which of your three questions or all of them will be responded to, but I'll begin with Michael. All three or pick one?
I can try for all three if I remember all three. I think the first one was the letter hopefully got sent out, and Andy Steinberg, who's chair of the regional school district planning board, sent it out, so.
Of the board?
Yeah, as that board.
Michael, I just add, if I may, that letter was with some edits. Should have gone out at some point during the day today.
Right. And I think the process that we agreed to is that there'd be at least one representative from each town reviewing the letter to make sure we're all on the same page about understanding. And the reason was less about, well, the reason was to figure out, as Catherine pointed out, it's unorthodox, no one's ever done it before, so to see if it passed muster because we can't spend time and effort and potentially more money if they're not going to support it. So, that's sort of just the first one. The question about the DESI grant, I would say this whole process has been a huge, aside from the working together part, just getting our heads around the how it works and what can work and what are the requirements that we had helped. Part of the DESI grant paid for folks from Pioneer Valley Planning and really facilitated the process of connecting, you know, I think there was mixed reviews on the consultants that we hired, but they were still delivering information, and that forced us through a process of having to gather information and getting clarity. So, I think the learning and the information gathering was essential. So, it surely was not a straight line, but I would say it was forward direction, and we wouldn't be here if we hadn't done that. And then, the last one was in terms of this body, it wasn't clear until we agreed on Thursday that it might end up at the regional school committee. And so, the deciding thing is if you're creating a new region, it's the regional school district planning board, so that body of twelve, the one that met on Thursday. If you're amending, then it comes to the regional school committee. And so, up until Thursday, we didn't know if we were agreeing to anything. So, it would have been premature, I think, you know, probably last year at some point when I was giving it up that I said it might come here. And so, I think what needs to happen going forward is if we get a thumbs up from DESI that they'll consider it, then it's a matter of bringing it to this committee and saying, you know, what we've discussed on the board, so the twelve person, is to say, we've done two years of research, we've like figured this out, and it's so complex that, you know, despite what Trevor's saying about doing it over, I think there's stuff that we don't have to do because people have learned. And so, bring it forward and saying, it's within the purview of this committee to make the decisions and put out the mandate and say yes, because we have to vote to say we want to start the process anyway. But once we do that, I think the two things come out is to say, there's a recommendation about composition of the committee that this body would appoint. And then, two, just taking all that learning and saying, this is what we know, this is what from our previous process we're recommending this committee think about. So, it's really laying at the steps or the feet of this committee, you know, information, recommended process, but then it's for this committee to own and initiate. So, I think, you know, it's setting it up for success if we get that far.
I'm keeping an eye on the twelve o'clock and our agenda. There are people in the audience who are here for purposes of presenting to us, and I want to make sure they have ample time to do that. So, Catherine, I'm going to ask you to keep the responses as brief as possible.
Very short. Because like Michael often does, he said everything very eloquently and to the point. I just want to put a little nuance on some of the things he said and filter it a little different for you, Dr. Shabazz. So, you're definitely correct. The reason that we have to get this permission from DESI or just clarification from DESI is because of the nature of this. You can imagine going to vote at your town that says regional school district, there could be these towns or this town or this town, and vote for which one you think is the best or how that would look. DESI may not approve that we can have such an open-ended vote, such a vote that is just with so many variables. So, the first thing is to see if that is the case. If that is the case, which some people on the board suspect it, it may not come back that way. I don't want to sugarcoat it. And he's right about the grant money that's been spent. We couldn't have got this far without having some experts explain to us and show us how to fill in some of these details and how this works. We paid them to fill in details about a plan that we have since now sprung. So, the details they filled in for us is not applicable, but the process and how to fill them in now, we know how to do, so we can do it. But make no mistake in bones about it, what we now have to do is that for several different plans. We'd have to do that for if it's Amherst and Pelham and Leverett, or if it's Amherst and Leverett and not Pelham and Shrewsbury. And if it's, you have to do that for the combination of the different variables. We'd have to do that for what the finances and assessment would look like in each one of those scenarios, what the governance would look like in each one of those scenarios, and all other details. So, it's yeoman's work, and it took us two years just to figure out how to do the work and, you know, part of that to do the work. So, I know we want to put the sunniest face on it, but I don't want to sugarcoat it. That is not easy to do. We have built in our own town now the internal capacity to do it, and we have decided to do it. And I don't want anybody in the public to be short-changed on what that means, that is going to involve some contentious issues and people weighing in, and that's that.
Thank you. Catherine?
Yeah, I don't need to take any more time. I think both my colleagues spoke to it really well. I think the only thing I just wanted to emphasize was how incredibly hard this board has worked and that I think the two years has been instructive and productive, and we couldn't even begin to attempt what we're trying to do now without both the consultants and the research and work of the board.
Thank you, Catherine. There will obviously be more information, up or down, thumbs up, thumbs down, hopefully fairly soon, so more to come. Thank you very, very much. Maria?
So, I'm going to hold on to written updates and a few others I had. I'm just going to ask Jeanne Fay to come up, so we'll try to abbreviate because I know we have people waiting. Jeanne Fay, again, just so that everyone remembers, is the president of the APEA and the staff person at Crocker Farm, and she was instrumental in bringing a wonderful opportunity for our community and many communities partnering with the district attorney's office, the MTA, the NEA, bringing a conference which was around school safety that we recently had. So, Jeanne, I'd love you to be able to just share a little bit about that with the committee.
Sure. Thank you, Maria, and to the school committee for giving me the opportunity to report on this. And as Maria said, I am president of APEA, but I'm also a product of the Newtown school system. I grew up in Newtown. My mom is actually retired schoolteacher from the Newtown school system. So, like the rest of the world, just about a year ago, I watched in shock as all of the images of my town appeared on all the media and knew I had to do something about it. So, as a member of Dave Sullivan's Citizen Advisory Board, I was on the planning committee for the first Safe School Summit, which was on teen suicide, which took place a year ago. And in January, we started planning this year's Safe School Summit, and I asked that the topic be mental health resources for school-aged children. And I talked to just about everyone I knew about the need for more accessible mental health resources. I'm also a member of the Massachusetts Teachers Association Board of Directors and was able to write some grant money to provide some funding. I'm also active at the national level, and because of that, I was actually contacted by someone at NEA headquarters who said basically, we like what you're doing, we'd like to give you some more money, and was given quite a bit of money to provide additional funding for the Safe School Summit. And the goal of this was actually to target school staff members that don't usually get training. And I want to make sure that the school committee knows that during this whole process, I never heard no from Maria, from head of HR Kathy Mazur, or from Fay Brady. They said, yes, we can do this. Yes, we can send people from the transportation department to get these trainings. Yes, we can send cafeteria monitors. We can send paraeducators. We can send school secretaries because these are the people that are with the kids during the unstructured learning time, and these are the kids that are the main reporters at the district attorney's office. So, we had close to 300 people attend this. We had school nurses. We had bus drivers. We had cafeteria workers. We had paraeducators. We had school secretaries. We had administrators. We had mental health providers. And because it was such a success, of course, I've been asked to do another one. So, NEA has very graciously offered additional grant money to do a statewide Safe School Summit. Additionally, I will be teaching a workshop in January that is open to Massachusetts Teachers Association Education Support Professionals, which would be your bus drivers, your cafeteria workers, your custodians, school secretaries, paraeducators. That will be taking place in Holyoke, January 22nd, and it's kind of a follow-up to the Safe School Summit that we had in Northampton. And this one will be on the School Crisis Guide, which is more about the protocol and what to do before, during, and after a crisis. And I'm looking forward to presenting to you about this time next year on the success of yet another Safe School Summit. And if I could leave you with one thing, as someone who grew up in Newtown, which is a beautiful town, and these are the words of Pat Lodra, who is the select board chair of Newtown, was just asking people this week to do, just do a small act of kindness wherever you are. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I ask you to stay up here in case there are questions from members of the committee, please? First of all, congratulations. An extraordinary job. Thank you. Members of the committee, Lawrence?
So, it's great. Thank you very much. And what I'm really pleased is that we've gotten education beyond just classroom teachers and administrators. From my experience, this is incredibly valuable work. So, a very simple question. You don't have to answer it now, but I'd like to know what we as a body can do going forward to assist this process.
I'll probably be contacting you when we really get into the nuts and bolts of the statewide initiative. I've already contacted Ellen Story. And this, one of the things that was so wonderful about this was that it showed what can happen when real collaboration and partnerships take place. We had the largest union in the nation, basically, working with school administrators, working with the district attorney's office, public safety officials. And from what I've been told, this has never taken place before. And when I initially brought staff members from the Massachusetts Teachers Association into the Northwestern DA's office for a meeting, after about a 15 to 20 minutes of conversation, everybody around the table looked and said, why hasn't this happened before? Because the kids that are in the juvenile justice courtroom are our kids.
Other questions? Catherine?
Thanks. This is great. I wonder if as part of the plan going forward, there's follow-up? Is it more than just a one-day experience for the 300 that you mentioned?
There will be follow-up. This is paid for with some of the grant money that I wrote, and that will be taking place on January 22nd. It's an evening workshop that is open to MTA, unions love acronyms, so it's open to MTA ESP members, which would be education support professionals. That's our target audience. And I'm actually sharing this guide with Amherst school staff who are very interested in it. This is NEA's HIN, which is their Health Information Network, School Crisis Guide, and it's actually, it's an amazing booklet. This is the workshop. I taught this actually out in Minneapolis to the Education Minnesota Professional Conference in October. So, I'll be teaching that in January in Holyoke, and I'll be teaching it again in San Francisco in March and in Hyannis in April.
I was just hoping that school committee members could get a copy.
I might be able to have some available after the January workshop. I have one that I've kind of promised to Dave Slovan, and I'm glad that he's here tonight.
Dave can have it, but then...
But this, NEA is a wonderful resource. This guide is actually available for free to NEA members, so I've been trying to get as many copies as possible, so I'll see what I can do.
Thank you so much, Jeanne.
Any other questions to comment? Yes, Trevor?
Excellent conference, it sounds like. This might seem like a kind of loaded question or put you on the spot, but, you know, this is kind of preventative medicine. Do this in case and when things happen and don't really have a constant monitor of how effective it is or how this is working. I'm wondering if what your feedback has been from the participants, you know, from the...
Absolutely amazing. The feedback from my workshop that I taught in Minnesota was equally as amazing. Basically, I wish this had happened before. I've already used this information. The evaluations are going to be very helpful in getting additional grant money, as you can imagine. I think... I think that it's even more telling that today, Vice President Joe Biden was surrounded by families of the victims of the Sandy Hook tragedy and announced that the US government is releasing $100 million for mental health resources to become more readily available. And that was just announced this afternoon. So yes, change does happen.
I guess what I'm getting at is that you don't want to test these skills. I guess the ultimate test of these skills is when a crisis happens. Oh, I had the training, I know what to do. I'm asking, kind of, are these perishable skills? Are these, is there a way you can look at somebody and say, "Oh, I'm sure they would know what to do if a crisis happened and they had this, and this is somebody that needs to be trained." How do you identify who needs to be trained? If there's a way, there may not be.
The goal of this was to make sure that there is training available for school staff members that are often overlooked. My discussions with the District Attorney's Office, about 80% of the reporters for school-based incidents are support staff, which would be the bus drivers, the cafeteria workers, paraeducators, because most of these incidents take place during unstructured learning time. About structured learning time, the playground, the cafeteria, the hallways.
It's kind of unfair. I don't know if there would be a sufficient answer to this question. It's kind of unfair.
There's, one of the things that I told the participants at the workshop I taught in Minnesota was that any, even the best crisis plan can always use improvement. So no one should have a book on a shelf that they think is the ultimate guide. Every, you should be constantly improving.
The unions that are representing those individuals, that there's adequate money or somehow designated for professional development and time off is done.
That's actually what this grant paid for. It covered the conference fees, which were actually quite low, to be honest with you. But for this, amazing. I mean, if you look...
But going forward, once the grant money disappears, it would be on us if we wanted to keep this alive.
Sure. Well, I'm going to remember that.
You get people calling you all the time, giving you money.
If you look through the listing of the workshops that were offered that day, the conference fee was $35 for a full day, which included lunch. The conference fees for Education Support Professionals were waived for the grant, because of the grant. And also, any smaller school districts that would not have been able to afford to send these staff members to the conference because of substitute costs, the grant money paid for substitutes. So the goal was to have no school district say to us, "We can't afford to send these staff members." My response to any school system that said that to me was, "You can't afford not to send them."
Thank you.
So I just wanted to mention to Dr. Chris Overtree, who's here in our audience, was also a presenter at this conference, and he's also with Sarah Wittemann. And Sarah, I can't remember your last name. They're also working with us. So when we talk about our training and our continuation of our programming and support on the prevention side, that continues and is not only related to this pack of people sitting right here, but also how we're structuring our systems and some outside people who are coming in to work with us around active bystanders and responsibilities around anti-bullying. And then also, we have, as a system, put in place through much of the leadership of Dave Sullivan and Lieutenant O'Connor through the Amherst Police Department, we have done an amazing amount of work around response, which you hope to never have to deal with. But it takes drills, real-time tabletop drills, so that responses become right, because you don't want to be making up a response in the middle of a crisis. And we have practiced all kinds of scenarios with our adults, our school teams, and we are with students this year. And we have practiced, most recently, a reunification drill, which most people we've spoken with, NIMA and other agencies, have said that schools have not taken that last step, which is unbelievably complicated to figure out how you reunify after a tragedy. So unfortunately, we do have to practice those things, and we do that yearly, routinely. And now our work is really to bulk up the prevention side and the support for students upfront.
I think Selectman Chair Pat Lodra said it best. She's been asked numerous times, "What would have been the best result or outcome?" And her response was, "For this to not have happened." Unfortunately, that's not the reality. So again, the best crisis guide, manual, whatever, always needs tweaking and always could use improvement. And that's why we should be constantly sending the staff to the trainings. And we had, one of the goals also of the planning committee for the Safe School Summit was to try to find local experts, so that the school districts that participated would then be able to have these people come into the school systems.
We're fortunate.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much, Amy. Congratulations. Thank you. Maria, the next...
Yes, I'm going to ask Fay. No, no, I'm going to stop. I'm not going to do updates because I want to make sure that...
Can Fay come up?
We have visitors, so we want to make sure that people are here and able to...
And I'm not going to be upfront, other than to introduce the people who are going to present on our participation in the Inclusive Concurrent Enrollment, which we refer to as ICE, another acronym. And we're fortunate enough tonight to have representatives from Westfield State, UMass, as well as our personnel and the parent and student, to just give you a little snapshot into this exciting opportunity. So if everyone's still here, please come up. And I want to thank them in advance. So we want to...
I will try to. Yep. Got it.
Maybe one of the...
Yep, love to.
Hi, I'm Laurel Pelter. I'm the Secondary Special Education Coordinator for the Amherst-Pellam Regional Schools. And I have very little to say to you, other than to say that Inclusive Concurrent Enrollment is a grant funded through the Department of Education that provides opportunities for students with severe disabilities who have not passed MCAS or who are focusing on only a transition sort of program. And they passed MCAS, but they're still severely disabled to actually access inclusive college experiences, including taking classes at colleges across the state and participating in clubs and activities. So I'm going to hand it over to the team of people who have been involved in supporting this. My role has largely been behind the scenes to do writing on forms. So that part is mostly over, and now these guys are carrying the ball. We participate in two Inclusive Concurrent Enrollment projects. I believe that we are the only district in Western Massachusetts that's actually active in two partnerships. Most districts participate only in one. So we have students at Westfield and at UMass Amherst. And we have Rachel Haugenhill here from UMass Amherst, and Lindsay Noon's from Westfield State. And I'm going to give them the opportunity to come forward. We also have Tim Kretzer, who is our liaison for the UMass Project and our Special Ed Teacher for Pathways to Independence. And we have Katherine Monica and Alex Monica here to share the parent perspective and the student perspective about the program. And we'll take your questions after we're done.
So I am... This is going to be really awkward with people behind and front. Sure. Oh. So I am the ICE Program Coordinator at Westfield State, and I am lucky enough to actually collaborate with Rachel. UMass and Westfield both got their grants right around the same time. September 1st is really when things were kind of, yes, it's actually really going to happen, especially for us at Westfield. Laurel already spoke to you what the grant is, but the big piece that we're really looking at is providing students with intellectual disability skills and activities that are going to further their overall quality of life, especially in the realm of employment and gaining meaningful employment. So, students, the first few slides are just some research from ThinkCollege.net. That's really kind of the forerunner of this type of work. In Massachusetts, for those who don't know, I recently went to a conference, and there was only 256 universities or colleges in the nation that are doing this type of work. 10 or more are actually in Massachusetts. So we're really kind of ahead of the curve. Not as far ahead as we should be for these students, but we're getting there. So just the importance of ICE in general. Students are going to benefit academically and especially in the transition period. So early intervention, elementary school, there is really strong supports for kids with disabilities all through high school. But then students turn 22, and it's like, "Thanks for coming. We'll see ya." And not to put it not nicely, but we're hoping that through this program, that students come into our programs around 18 or between 18 to 20. And we really do some community-based instruction with their peers, because the students at college are their age. They're not still in a high school where they're now 21 and there's 14-year-olds. They're on a college campus where it ranges from 21 to, I mean, there's really no age that you can't go to college. So another big piece of ICE is developing meaningful relationships between a university and school districts. So I have, on my partnership, we have Westfield, Amherst, Ludlow, Chickadee, Southwick, and Gateway. And some of those towns are right, I mean, Westfield's right in our town, and just like UMass Amherst is right in Amherst. These are relationships that should have already kind of been there, but now we're just really strengthening them. And then again, through our partnerships, we hope to promote more linkages to adult agencies for families for post-22. So really opening up what's out there. The benefits for the students in general, I can just say, even just knowing Alex, who's at Westfield, from when I met him at Orientation on August 28th to now, just the growth I've seen in him. And I don't have the data to actually say it besides just my own observations, but it's amazing. As we go forward, we really look at college courses related to the job interest. Then we're looking for internships on the campus, then paid work. We're doing independent living skills, independent travel, just as though an IEP is geared and individualized. We're doing that just now on a college campus. This is just a slide that I've actually pulled from a Think College website, because the second row is just youths with intellectual disabilities who received post-secondary education, and they are 48% more likely to actually have paid employment post-22 compared to peers who did not receive post-secondary services. That's only 32%. So that's not 100%, but it's getting there. And even just the number total of students is only 1,223. That was pooled in this number. If you look at your numbers of how many students you actually have in your district with intellectual disabilities, some districts are hitting those numbers. So we hope going forward that this will continue to go. So this is just kind of how we're running things at Westfield State, and then Rachel will speak about UMass. But I'm a very visual person, so it's been very hard to just kind of have this program. So we start with a person-centered plan, which is so different, because now we're sitting the students down and saying, "What is it you want to do?" They're so used to coming to IEP meetings where everybody around the table is talking about their assessment results and about different things, but the students never truly ask, "What is it you want?" So now we're kind of flipping it and just saying, "What do you want to do in five years? Do you want to live with mom? Do you not want to live with mom?" And we take all of these, identify preferences, strengths, and goals, and then we identify a program plan. Through an academic course, the students audit or take a course for credit that's aligned with their long-term employment goals. We target health and wellness activities, social-emotional health activities, and employability activities, all again, trying to increase their overall quality of life for when they leave our program. So Laurel mentioned clubs. And the biggest obstacle I had within my first week of Westfield was that all of our clubs meet at 7:00 at night, 8:00 at night, times that my students are just not there. So what we did, I started going to all the special ed intro classes and really reaching out to the students in there, saying, "Are you interested in becoming a peer mentor?" I maybe had 10. This number says we have 30. Actually, as of last week, we have 50 peer mentors of just in one semester of students who... It started where I went to classes and I put flyers up, and now I just have people who get my business card from other people on campus, and I get emails that they're interested in working with our students. Alex, every Tuesday and Thursday spends an hour after class with two girls who tutor him in biology, because I am no help there. And they, today I saw them, and they're like, "We just, we love it." And these are peers. These are the students they've been with. And my kind of first peer mentor story that I always have to say when I do this presentation is, the first day, all of our students were leaving, and I was going to my car, and it had been a very long day, and a peer is walking by, and he looks at me and goes, "Do they go here?" And I just stopped, and I said, "Yeah, yeah, they do." And he said, "That's absolutely amazing and wicked awesome." And I looked, and I said, "You're right." And this was after a day that I just really wanted to crawl under my desk and cry. And I just said, "You are. You're right." So I start telling him about the program. Next thing I know, he's giving me his email. He's telling me he's coming to lunch with the kids, the students tomorrow. And he had lunch with our students every day after that. And he has brought friends over. And he is a student that I would never have thought was going to be 100% kind of into the program. And then come to find out, he had went to an inclusive elementary school. So the peers that are on college campuses, this is normal to them. This is where they've just grown up with this type of opportunity, where they're working with their students. I have more difficulty with getting faculty on board. So that's kind of where we're at.
My name's Rachel Haugan. I'm the Program Coordinator for the ICE Program at UMass. And just like Westfield State, the person-centered planning meeting drives the course selection. So that's what I focus on first, because scheduling is kind of tricky with getting everything, you know, all the needs met at the high school and then at UMass, too. So, you know, we meet and say, "What do you want to do with your life?" And I think that a person-centered plan should be something that every human being does, honestly. But, so it's really, it's really great. And I've actually done it at the beginning of the semester and then at the end, just to see what the growth is. Right now, I mean, it happened really fast for these guys and for us, too. We had a really short amount of time to plan it. So now we're kind of still developing and figuring out how we want it to be. UMass is huge. So students coming from, you know, one building to all these buildings and all these different places to eat, and it's challenging. And the transition was definitely difficult for some of the students, and it was visibly difficult. So we're talking to outside agencies, trying to get them to work with the high schools to do some wraparound services, like transition skills, social skills, travel training, doing the vocational placement on campus, which is happening with some of the students, but not all right now. UMass is like a little city, so it would be nice if we could get all of those things going there. I meet with a student and the ed coach every week, just to check in and tailor the experience. And then in terms of social engagement, I mean, that's been a piece that has developed even just over the semester. Because of scheduling issues, kind of worked out group lunches that people could come to, and then the paraeducators who come with the students could give each other breaks and things like that. And so they would be there with their ed coach, who's a paraeducator from the high school. And I also hired campus mentors at UMass, who are, you know, undergrads, matriculated students, who we train at Disability Services to, you know, work on transition skills, work on social skills. And then we also have peer volunteers who come to the lunches, too. But, you know, the students will, they are exploring campus and downtown Amherst, going to art galleries, museums, conservatories, concerts, checking out the different places to eat on campus, the REC Center. They all have memberships to the REC Center, except one. She's not into it, but she has, she has money at the Craft Center, so she goes there. And they're really excited about going ice skating. They go downtown. Sometimes they have enough time with the campus mentor to go see a movie if they want to. So just kind of being a student on campus with the supports that they need.
The first thing I'd like to say is that I'd like to extend gratitude from my entire family for what the opportunity that we've had here for my son.
Let's blow it.
This is the thing that you dream of. This is the thing that you dream of, you know, when you have him as a little kid, and here they go. Thanks, Alex, for keeping it real. Um, I've, I had, I could not have expected, um, his excitement, um, at this opportunity to go to college. I'd never dreamed of it. And to see him go and to come home and report about all the things that he'd learned in a subject that, you know, human biology, I thought, "Oh, God, that'll, you know, how's that going to work?" And he came home and talking about DNA and, um, the body and nutrition and, you know, it, it's just been amazing. Uh, all of the staff, um, that has supported him have been amazing, you know, Lindsay and, and Paul, his, uh, ed coach Laurel has, they've all knocked themselves out. And, um, you know, uh, at, uh, Thanksgiving, my entire family just wanted to extend that, uh, that thanks, we knew we were going to be doing this. And, um, you know, to see Alex with his social, uh, you know, growth in going out to a campus and, you know, navigating that campus and, uh, partaking in some of those activities and loving his peer coaches, um, it's, it's been really great. So, um, with that, I think I'll let Alex speak for his experience. I might ask him a couple of questions.
There you go. Oops. Hello? All right, all right. My name's Alex, and, well, during my time at Westfield, it was quite good. I learned a lot of things. It was quite well. I had a good teacher, Professor Diaz, who showed me a lot of interesting things, to teach me a lot of things of biology that I would never expected of. Mm-hmm. Well, usually, I would take labs of, we were doing a lot of work, of doing a lot of work. And at lectures, I'd listen to her telling a lot of incredible things about hu- of humans and such. Still, I'd say Westfield is a great place. I, well, you originally never believed in going to college, but I'm starting to get into it, I think. Still, I, I can't wait for what my next semester will be of my time around college, I guess. So, I hope I have, uh, good help from Lindsay, my mom, Mr. Paul, and my, I guess, my tutors when, if they all will help, I guess. So, thank you all for all this help for me, so, thanks.
I'm not sure there's any, any other slides. My name is Kim Kretzer, and I am a new teacher here in Amherst. I'm in the Pathways to Independence Program. I work with the transition age students, ages eight, eighteen to twenty-two, um, but I am not new to the ICE partnership. The school that I was at previously had a partnership with Holyoke Community College, and so, for the past four years prior to coming here, um, I worked with HCC and students at HCC, um, with intellectual disabilities to help them, uh, navigate that, that environment. And I have to say that when I initially came into the program and initially heard about ICE, um, my first thought was like, "This is insane, this is crazy. Why are we taking students with intellectual disabilities and putting them onto a college campus?" And I think that that is a perspective that is, that still exists out there, even when I talk about it to some colleagues. But I do have to say, based on my experience with this over the past four years, how successful it has been at Holyoke Community College, and I know that Westfield and UMass are very new to the ICE program, um, but I think that this will be a huge success here as well. I've seen students who were, you know, during their high school time, relied very heavily on one-to-one paraprofessional support, go into a college environment, and just the level of expectation of, you know, students who are in a college environment, they're expected to function independently, they're expected to be apart from their parents, they're expected to not sit with a staff person at all times. It gives them the opportunity to kind of test those waters and to become function, you know, to function in a more independent way, um, in an environment where everybody is doing that. All the, all of their peers are doing the same exact thing, and there's a little bit of a safety net around college, I think, you know, not just for students with disabilities, but for all students, um, who at age eighteen, you know, they're adults, but they're not really quite ready for the real world, so to speak. Um, and I think it gives our, our students with disabilities, um, the same opportunities that students without disabilities would, would normally have by putting them into that sort of environment to teach those skills in a generalized setting. So, um, I don't know, I guess that's... Any questions from anybody? Yes?
How many students are in the program from Amherst?
Um, currently, we have two students who are enrolled at Westfield, and we are having four, we'll have four students in the spring semester at UMass. So, six students total.
And is that, is that your goal, or is there, will there be more? What's the scope?
There will be more.
Yeah.
For sure. I mean, I think we wanted to start small, just make sure that we have a good solid program before we expand to the numbers, but the goal is definitely to increase the number. There were ten slots in the fall.
I'm sorry. Do you, would you mind, please? Thank you, I'm sorry, thank you.
There were ten slots in the fall and Amherst had six.
So, first, I'd just like to say, wow. I, I think this is really an amazing program, and I love to hear these kinds of presentations, because we deal with a lot of stuff that's very negative, and this is just so positive and so hopeful, so I want to say thank you to all of you. So, my second question is just, and maybe I missed this, so how many semesters can the students attend the school? I actually have two questions, that's my first one.
Okay, so, students are eligible to attend starting at age eighteen, once they've completed their high school coursework here. And as lo- typically, the priority is given to students who have not passed the MCAS test. I think it really just, it, it depends somewhat on the student and the person-centered planning for that student and what the goals are. Some students will, the students who I've worked, I worked in the, worked with in the past have attended for two years, and then we focus on, um, a year of vocational skills after that. So, the, some students have gone into age eighteen and stayed straight through to age twenty-two. It really kind of depends a little bit on the student and also on the slots that are available, and if other students are coming up and wanting, you know, that experience as well. So, it's a little bit of a balance between all those things.
Can I ask, so then, my second question is, am I correct that this is state grant-funded? And, and is this, has this been a fairly stable grant? I mean, how tenuous is the funding for this program?
You guys want to talk to that?
So, the grant itself, um, when HCC had received the grant, they kind of did a five-year plan, knowing that maybe by year five, they would go self-sustaining. At Westfield, we're kind of taking the same perspective of just kind of planning for the time that we will need districts to eventually pay and how we can kind of self-sustain on the campus. But in general, um, Rachel and I have been reaching out to, because ICE itself used to be through, um, DESI, and now it's actually through ESE, so the executive offices, so it's kind, the grant, the program itself is also in its own transition. They're pretty confident, though, that we will be funded going forward. I mean, the grant right now is for a hundred. It might not be for the full hundred, but I know, I'm learning at Westfield, that we don't really need the full hundred to really provide the program that we can provide. So, it's kind of just learning and checks and balances. I hope it never goes away, though.
Thank you.
Other questions? Sure.
One second. I think one of the things that we saw this year, that the state is really committed to this, um, typically, the state funds one grant proposal, um, each year, and this year, um, they, when both Westfield and UMass talked with us about, "Would we be interested in partnering with both universities?", which is unusual, we said, "Absolutely," because we knew we'd get more slots and more students to participate, and they made an exception to say they would fund both. So, we're hoping that means that there's a lot of interest and support from the state level. And we're seeing the, the strong, um, real results for focusing on abilities, not just disabilities. And hopefully, that's the real takeaway from this, is that students even with severe disabilities have tremendous abilities, and we need to focus on those. And the staff, I just have to say something just really quickly, this came to us at the eleventh hour plus. So, under really Laurel's direction, a grant proposal was drafted, submitted, I, I think in less than a week. And then, the universities, I think, scrambled to just make this happen. So, this has been, really been what it requires a village to take something to happen, so...
Mike?
Um, first, thank you all for presenting. It's, it's a heartwarming thing to see, so thank you. I just want to pop up on, I think Debbie's question. So, if it wasn't grant money, is it a matter of sort of districts negotiating with the colleges to figure out how much the colleges can pick up and how much the districts can pay?
Yes.
Okay.
I can actually tell you at HCC, because I worked with Kim in South Hadley, um, that the grant did phase out, and they went to a point where districts were paying for students to go, but the tuition and fees for a one-year program for the students who attended was seven thousand dollars. A typical out-of-district placement can start at thirty thousand and go to three hundred. So, it, in terms of cost-benefit, um, and the opportunity for inclusion, and the outcomes that we see where students are independently accessing transportation, independently continuing at work sites and volunteer sites, independently maintaining relationships with the people they connect with because of the nature of the connection, that it doesn't mediate through a paraeducator or a teacher, it's, the outcomes are phenomenal. It's a very cost-effective program.
Any other questions from members of the committee? Thank you all very, very much. This is extraordinary work that you do. Thank you. Thank you very, very much. And thank you for coming in.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Alex.
Care.
And you didn't blow it, did you?
Yep. You did, you did fine.
Maria, next on the list.
Okay, so next, um, I think it's Fay and Mike. And what we're going to talk a little bit about, um, tonight is, you know, what we have underway just to support our students, um, on the preventative end, and also in terms of changing some of our practices for, um, intervening with students around behavior. So, we're going to talk about discipline data, and I think for me, the important thing to really state upfront is, it would be wonderful to say we could change one thing and we could change the whole situation. That is not the case. We really need to re-norm our schools, um, from development, uh, professional development for our teachers, um, rethinking how we provide responses or how we respond to students' behavior, um, to change a code of conduct, and how we really spend some time, um, reflecting on, um, what we've been doing in the past and what we need to do differently. So, we're really fortunate to have a strong team that's working with us to help us see the whole picture. So, we'd love to talk about where we are with discipline data right now at the secondary level and talk to you about some of our plans going forward, um, and it is a work in progress. So, um, Mike and Fay, um, I don't know who's starting first.
Thank you. So, um, as Maria said, I think just what we're going to present, and I know there's time, uh, for questions, uh, and some dialogue, is really trying to set, uh, what's a state lack of, national and local issue, um, and then go through, and I'm going to try to just orient you to the data that was in your packet. We'll do questions at the end, if that's okay with everybody. And then, really to talk about what our response has been to the data and to what we've seen, and then we can have some dialogue at the end. Hopefully, it's agreeable to everybody as a format. So, um, I know last time, uh, I was here, I think, there was some discussion about whether looking at kind of larger context than Amherst is helpful or not, and so, there's a lot of Amherst data, and then we included some national and state data, so hopefully, whatever makes, um, is worthwhile to you, you can take a look at. And so, we have a national problem, and you see, we have a state problem. And I think part of those problems are the disproportionate disciplining of students of color and students with disabilities. And, um, by no means is this data presented as a reason to say, "We're going to be comfortable with that, the disparities," but it is to say that there's lots of good people working on it, and we're trying to figure out the best practices that are proven to be effective elsewhere. It's not a local problem, it's, it's a larger problem and it's a local problem. They're not mutually exclusive. So, if you could look through, um, what was in the packet with the data, I'd like to just orient you, because it's a lot of numbers, and I want to make sure that everyone is able to analyze them and know what those numbers are standing for. So, on the, it was in the packet, um, in the back, is there extras?
Are there more? Do you have extras? Because I also have, I wrote mine.
Here you go. Hey, Mike?
Yep. Perfect.
For, for folks who may have an iPad, it's, the package is also in our district website. You can see it here.
Thanks, Debbie, thanks, Maria, and thank you, Michael. So, the first chart on the, one that says page one on the bottom, has some state comparison discipline data. The most recent year the state has released that data was two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. They haven't caught up to last year yet. And what you see is, in the kind of darker, what looks like bold, um, font, is the suspension rate for Amherst, and the kind of lighter font, the state averages. And what these are standing for are the total percentage of students who received a suspension during that school year. So, if you're looking, for instance, at the state totals, um, the total suspension rate, uh, seven point four, that's a state average. So, it's not counting for students who have been suspended more than once, it's just looking at total number of students and what, how many of them received a suspension. And it says one through twelve Amherst, that's grades one through twelve. They don't disaggregate, I know this is a regional board meeting, and we'll talk about regional Amherst data in a second, or Amherst regional data in a second, um, but that is statewide data. And you can see the comparisons by race, ethnicity, from Amherst data to state data, both in total suspensions and then also broken down in-school and out-of-school. The next category just shows the overall demographic information, uh, of the middle school and high school. I think that's important when we get to the more local slides, so I wanted to make sure that was included. So, if you can flip to page three, you'll see our, this is our local data from two thousand twelve, two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, and then this year through December first, which is roughly a third of the school year. This data is slightly different than the other data. This is the number of, um, suspensions, number of incidents of suspension. And the reason we tried to look at that data is, if a student is suspended multiple times, that for me shows that, that kid's needs aren't being met. So, I think it's worth including, instead of just the total number of students suspended, I think it matters if, and I want to count, I believe it's a more fair way to look at the data about incidents of suspension than if you're looking just at students. So, that, that's what you're looking at there. And in the first chart's about out-of-school suspensions, and about halfway down the page, uh, you'll see some percentages. So, it says like middle school percent out-of-school suspensions by students of color. So, what you'll see, for instance, in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, there was sixty-three percent, while students of color were thirty-six percent of the student population. So, ideally, there'd be no difference in these two percentages, that we'd, there'd be equity, uh, between the percentage of incidents of suspension of students of color and the percentage of students of color. Uh, and you could see the difference between the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve school year in both the middle school and the high school. The chart below that is the same, except it's for in-school suspensions. But, and if you go to the back, which is page, oh, well, I'll give you a second for that, but it's the same, same data sort, um, but instead of out-of-school, it's in-school. And the last page, which is the back page of the packet, um, has similar information, except for students, it's grouped by, uh, or sorted by special education status. So, you could see the total demographics are on the top of that page, and a very similar chart, again, looking at incidents of suspension, um, and it's looking at the last three school years and the percentage of suspensions, um, by special education students, uh, incidents of suspension. And again, for this year, um, I put on all those charts, I prorated out what it would be if the, the rate stayed constant. So, where you see like, the very last bottom of page four, where you see, it says eleven on pace for thirty-three. So, we tried to, it, it, it's hard to do that, because I'm sure it's not exactly, even when suspensions happen throughout the year, but we wanted to give as, as updated as, as possible information to the committee about how things are going this year so far. So, we'll, I know there'll be lots of questions on this, but I want to at least give everyone an orientation, and we can take more questions about the clarifying if there's any need for that. So, that's our local data, and I think what we're saying is that disproportionality is found. Uh, we're, we're looking at this closely, and we'll talk a little bit about what we're doing about it, but we, we're very honest and open and transparent that... doing about it, but we were very honest and open and transparent that there are some demographic predictors of suspensions. It's not something we're comfortable with and it's not something we're interested in hiding from folks. We want to start actively working on it. We are actively working on it. Excuse me. Oh, yeah, please. Thank you.
Let me just add one little piece that's not on here that hopefully we will have shortly, that the special ed, both in-school and out-of-school suspension numbers don't reflect here any disaggregation by disability category. And we are in the process of trying to pull that data so that we can look at it internally and certainly share it with you because we need to look at where this, these numbers are well beyond what we want to. And I'm working with CPAC as well, it's a goal of theirs this year to really look at our discipline of students with disabilities. And we want to look at disability category as well as programming for those students. So let me just go.
Quick one. To your point about students who would have repeated, that's not captured here.
No, it's not.
That's probably for confidentiality or just a...
Yeah, so we did, we do have that data, but I think it, for me, it's uncomfortable to present.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing it.
Because I think if I was a certain parent in the audience and we presented that, it'd be pretty easy to say, oh, well, this student might have been suspended X number of times. And I'm not comfortable with that.
Totally understandable.
Yeah. But no, it's a good point. And I appreciate the question.
Good question.
It is. And then we got the data.
Thanks, I know.
So now we'll talk a little bit about responses. And so the first response I'll talk a bit about is school climate. And I wanted to put a, some level of definition up there. This comes from the state of Georgia, who's had a significant investment in school climate across their schools, across their state. Other states have done so as well. And I think the key phrase, I'm not going to read it because I think you see it, is that it's really capturing the student perspective on what their experience is like. It's their perception of their experience, which is really valuable. And there's this chicken or the egg debate, as I read the research, about, well, we know that there's a lot of correlation between healthy school climate and reduced disciplinary rates and more equitable disciplinary rates, but it's sometimes hard to know which came first, right? Is it because it's a good school climate, we have it? Or is that an indicator of schools where it'd be likely that discipline rates would be low? I think, I'm swayed by the argument that school climate, because it is talking about students' direct experience in schools, is a valuable approach to take so that if we know how kids are feeling and what they're feeling when they're in our school and we can do something about it, then we can improve the experience of kids. Because really, it's about getting all kids' needs met. And so I think some of my colleagues are going to come up and talk a little bit about what it looks like to work on school climate in a middle school and a high school.
Not going to talk about all of these, just want to share a couple of highlights. Two of them, you see the intergenerational equity group up there in both the middle school and high school. As I think you're aware, that's a group of high school students and adults. It's on the middle school piece because they're also doing some work with us. And as a part of that group, I want to just speak to you about a few things that they're working on. November 27th, we had a all-day follow-up workshop to the, to what we did this summer. During that time, three subgroups were formed. The kids chose the pieces that they wanted to work on. There were three of them. The first one was youth culture. So a group of kids are working with the family center to develop curriculum, strategies, advice, all sorts of things that they want to then share with the middle school students. So they're bringing their learning down to our kids. The second, the second group was a curriculum group. They're kids who wanted to talk about how their experiences are reflected in our curriculum, A, and B, how equity is, you know, issues around all sorts of folks are, especially racial equity is reflected in our curriculum. We actually, that subgroup just met, I met with them, because I'm, I'm the adult that is, happens to be part of that. And we met with Rhonda Cohen, our teaching and learning person today, and had a pretty fabulous conversation. The third group was a special ed group. And this came from students again. And these kids had the experience of feeling like they got into special ed groups, they looked around, and it was mostly black and brown kids. And they looked around and they felt like once they were in, they couldn't get out. So they actually are scheduled to meet with Faye next week to share their experiences, their questions, their comments, and, and help see how they might be able to support that. So that's one aspect of getting kids' voices out into our school climate and kids helping kids as well. The other one I just wanted to speak to, which I had spoken with you guys earlier about, is our strong intention to continue to examine our code of conduct revisions, looking at both how, how we need to move and also learning from other schools, the kinds of things that other schools who are really being successful are moving from, from having a behavior and a consequence to really being able to teach kids and, and create a climate that is quite positive. So those are two of the highlights of the work that we're doing.
So I just want to note that Chris Overtree and Sarah were coming here after. So our PBIS partners. And they, one of the things that the high school would profit by, the PBIS relationship is that they have a mechanism by which we can solicit for more systematically student perspective. So it says, middle school is the top bullet and ours is kind of midway down, student-staff surveys. So that's coming up in the spring. And, and again, the key, the key adjectives there are more systematic and a comprehensive way to access. Having said that, I also want to note, and I've spoken about this in front of you before, that for at least the last three years, we've been getting progressively better about accessing. And in contrast to the school survey, it seems partial in some way, but from the video that we made of the kids to having now two years in a row, having kids of color in front of our faculty, most recently in the November faculty meeting, with a very, very narrowly drawn agenda, which is them reporting out to the adults, predominantly white, middle-class faculty, what it is like to be a person of color traveling through this building over the course of four years. And so we collated all that data, we categorized it, we're going to play it back to the fact, to a portion of the faculty on Thursday afternoon. But all that together goes and enables me to make this larger point, that the question of school climate through the prism of race attempts to answer the question of, of how is it that the largely white, middle-class people who are running the place can adjust their practice so that there's a fundamental connection, a fundamental comfort between kids and what it is that they bring to school? So a book that we've been reading, and I guess not in all the buildings, but in all the buildings, Whistling Valdi talks about stereotype threat. And it's a very helpful concept to organize our thinking about what it is that kids bring to school, how it plays out in the classroom, how it plays out in relationship with adults. And school climate, as it's being currently constructed in the district, isn't, is an attempt to break that, right? And to acknowledge what it is that kids bring and to understand that there are things that the school can do to interrupt and reshape their experience on a day-to-day basis. And so Betsy just itemized the things that are going on in the middle school. We have three years of work to that, to that effect. And I think it's just starting to acquire a sharp edge. And by that, I mean, we're starting to identify actionable practices based on what the kids have reported to us consistently over the last two years. And so, so I agree with, I agree with the fundamental premise of this work, which is that, which is that the whole tone and tenet of the place needs to shift if it's going to do any effective long-term training. So I just want to jump down to, if you go down to the fourth bullet under PBIS, the two sub-bullets. So I think it's fair to say that another tenet of PBIS is, is, it's paradigm flipping from sanctioning negative behavior to teaching appropriate behavior, right? I think that's a fair, a fair summary of a key organization of principle. And so based on training that we did with 30 kids in the high school, we had the whole ninth grade now going through active bystander training. And while it's interesting in and of itself, the point that I want to make is regarding the second bullet. So everybody remembers when Ron Ferguson came to you a year and a half ago, almost two years ago now. He said, one of the things he said, and he has surveyed kids all across America, his N is in the tens of thousands. And one of the things he said is that kids report to him that among the top three reasons, or one of the top three impediments they identify themselves at the classroom level is kind of peer-to-peer, peer-to-peer teasing, bullying, bothering behavior in classroom. It inhibits academic investment. So for my money, academic, active bystander training, interrupting the bullying, that's a powerful place for schools to begin to re-norm their culture. And I think the next most compelling step is to move to the classroom and interrupt that. So what we're anticipating with the school climate control group, I know you've heard of them before, is that that's the next phase of the work, how to take Ron's message and drive it into classrooms at the peer level. Thanks.
Yeah, are you, so I just wanted to say one more thing about the survey. Well, you could stay and just see if you want to jump on this one. But one of the things with, what Chris recommended to us about this, this survey is it is working with students who will distribute the survey to students. And the adults will also take the survey and the data will be looked at with students, with adults, so that we can see where is that gap between the students' perception of, and the adults? Because that's where we can develop some action planning. But the students are key to that process. Did I do that pretty well? Okay. Did you want to say anything?
I'm learning to channel Chris Overtree. So I think the way Chris...
You want to get up here? Right? So the survey is intervention, that was what I was going to say. Hi, I'm Chris Overtree. I'm a professor at UMass. AMERSS clinical psychologist and I specialize in school climate. The surveys they're talking about are school climate surveys, which are designed to be both data gathering and intervention. The notion being that you can engage students in an act of leadership and civil engagement to assess themselves, which garners validity to the surveys in the sense that students can begin to convince each other that these surveys are meaningful, that our voices are powerful, that they're important, that they want to be heard, and that we have a power in this community to make change and make difference. So the idea is that we actually involve students from the very beginning as leaders, helping to conceptualize how to do the surveys, how to customize them, how to convince their peers, which they will be more effective at than we will, to take them seriously. And then when it comes time to looking at the data, having the same level of appreciation for the strengths, concerns about the weaknesses that may be uncovered, and hopefully motivation and engagement in participating in the change process. So I hope that clarifies.
That was beautiful. Thank you. And I'm going to jump on one other topic before you move to questions and conversations. So we also mentioned change, working on the code of conduct, which will be an ongoing process this year so that we are seeing a different language in our code of conduct by, by the start of the next school year. Also, one of the recommendations from Chris, which I think sounds exceptional because we've been talking about the concept of an after-action review for a period of time now, around how do we look at circumstances that happen and really walk through and talk about the factors that maybe contributed to a situation not going so well, or what could we have done differently? So what we will be doing is putting together a group of people, a consistent group of people, including, I think, hopefully Sarah and Chris will be joining us at the district level, and I will be inviting Barry Brooks as well, to sit with us and for every suspension that happens, to invite the deans or any administrator at the school level to come and talk with us and present the case, present the situation. And it's a learning opportunity for us to use a formal after-action review. And it helps us to really reflect on not only our actions and our environment and setting, but also should we have done something differently to support that student? So it's really, it's a learning process for us from which we hope to start in January, is my optimistic perspective, through the end of the school year. And we'll, then we'll look at how this group, this committee, might morph into next year. So that's one of the top-down decisions that we're going to put in place right away.
So let me just add one second to that because I think by having this after-action review starting this year will position us very well for our work on code of conduct revisions, which we desperately need to do. From our own perspective, we need to do that, but also with the new legislation that is taking effect as of Jan, July 1st, which is going to be chapter 37 and three quarters, I think, to go from 37 to 37 and a half H to 37 and a half, and three quarters H, which is the state's new, what they call an unfunded mandate, to really put into place some real changes as to what districts are allowed to do and not allowed to do regarding suspensions. Some people think it's too stringent, other people think it's probably not stringent enough. So, but those changes will need to be for us to become in compliance with the new law that will be taking effect. But what I wanted us to go over a little bit now, again, is some of the things that we are currently doing and some of the steps we're taking to do a bit more that is really a way to be proactive versus reactive, which some people would really focus on discipline in some of the data you're looking at tonight, as being ways that school districts are reacting to student behavior. And one of the things we're trying to do is to transform our practice from being reactive to being proactive. And some of these are consultation with Dr. Overtree, Dr. Whitcomb, and Dr. Pfeffer in terms of positive behavioral supports, which is really looking at a way to change our systems of functioning to be effective practices versus us looking at what's not working and then this discipline data. We are looking at, to, one, somebody earlier tonight was talking about how this is just discipline data. We are looking at trying to get better, and we have a long way to go yet, but we're working on it actively, to looking at how we are defining student behavior so that we are understanding the whys of what is going on in our classrooms and in our unstructured settings, so that before it even gets to either an in-school or an out-of-school suspension, that we understand what is going on so we can begin to change things earlier on. Some of the ways we're doing that is by looking at ways to improve our student engagement by universal design. We are starting a district-wide, pretty intensive professional development to really begin to look at our classroom practices so that students are more engaged and feel inclined to really participate in an effective way. And that's going to really require helping our personnel learn how to really effectively educate all the students that are in their classroom versus trying, being more effective with a slice of who's in the classroom and then dealing with behaviors that might occur and sending students out of class or out of school is what we're seeing in our data here. What we know is as long as we're sending students out of class and out of school, we are not doing our job to educate them. Students cannot learn if they're not in class. And we are looking to really provide our teachers with the skills so that they can be effective in the classroom, as well as then also helping our students to learn the skills so that they can engage effectively in the instruction versus them behaving in a way that then they're sent out and then we're all in a reactive mode. So our data system has to get better. What we see on our suspension data is one piece, but our internal data in terms of what we call our educators handbook, where referrals are made to the office for students who are struggling in the classroom. We don't have good definitions of behavior. We don't have good responses in place yet. Our positive behavioral supports are in place, but as long as we are not identifying and naming behavior in the same way, we can't do our job as well. So these are just some of the ways we're trying to do that. We have a long way to go, but we're actively working on that with our coaches here, who are helping us along the way, plus our family center, which is another tier of helping us work with students and families that might need a little extra support, and that's just another place. I don't know if you guys have anything further you want to add about PBIS or any of that that might be effective at this point. Maybe we'll wait till we get to questions. So, okay. And this is just kind of a visual of understanding positive behavioral supports. It's not necess, some, you know, these acronyms, we wonder what they really are. And this is... really are. And this is just a way to show ways that we are looking at all the different practices and everything that's going on, as well as the outcomes, so that we learn how to support our staff, how to support our students, how to really focus on competence and academic achievement, and have our decision-making all be tied together. So it's just a visual that kind of helps understand what positive behavioral supports really is. So.
So, so the last piece we'll talk about tonight before we take questions and engage in dialogue is around cultural proficiency. And you could see, um, that the UCLA Civil Rights Project, I think, accurately describes that PBS is more effective in diverse settings when coupled with cultural competency training. And a lot of this happened through our DILT, our District Instructional Leadership, um, team, and you could see in, in the superintendent's goals, that was reflected, that this work was important and valued, um, because there was a goal specific around that. And that really started last winter with Michael Burkhard, I'm glad Michael's here, um, who both sat in and supported our DILT planning, about planning activities, as well as co-facilitating multiple DILTS throughout last spring and into this fall, as we got deeper into the work of, um, building, um, our capacity as culturally proficient leaders. Um, so I'll say a couple of things about that. Uh, one thing is really being clear about the privileges that our students have or don't have, and there's multiple ways to look at it. I think some of them were referenced before, but you certainly think about race, ethnicity, um, learning style, we heard about, um, tonight. Gender is certainly a large one, sexual orientation, and there's multiple identities that we all have, and some are more privileged in our society than others. And I think the first step is making sure that we're aware of the different experiences that our kids have and adults have. We're focused on kids, uh, being students in our schools. And so we've, we've been engaged in that work particularly, uh, last spring and this fall, and again, uh, supported directly by Michael. I think the two other pieces I'll talk about at DILT, one, Mark already referenced, Whistling Livaldi, so it's a book, uh, highly encourage people if they're interested in reading, uh, about stereotype threat. And stereotype threat is something that this, um, even if there was such a person who was totally unbiased, and I think that's, um, a challenge to think about, um, that there's institutional racism and institutional, um, privilege, not just around race, they talk a lot about gender in that book, that affects students regardless of a specific incidence of bias, that being quote-unquote colorblind is not a realistic solution to supporting the development of them in a multicultural society. So, a lot of the work at DILT hasn't been just for the leaders, but it's been for really the organization. And as you heard Mark mention before, uh, every, uh, all teachers in every school in our district, including the elementary, have read portions of this book and been instructed dialogues to discuss, uh, the impact on their work, uh, on teachers' work. I think the last thing I'll talk about too, connected to privilege, is really about the book in the upper right-hand corner, which we've, we've read through and worked with. This is really around trying to get to the action phase, right? It's, awareness is really important, and, uh, I think at times there can be a temptation for districts to stay in the awareness place forever, right, and not get into the, the specific actions. And so, um, there's a lot of books around cultural proficiency by those authors, they're very well-known, and I think the big thing is really about creating a cultural, um, a continuum of culturally proficient actions. Um, so for defining what it would look like to be culturally proficient when students were walking in a room, how you greet them, for defining what it meant like to give feedback in a culturally proficient manner, uh, then we're, things are a lot more achievable. If we stay in the awareness, we don't get to that action phase and defining, uh, specific instructional strategies that we need to have to support all of our students, I think we fall short of our commitment to diversity and equity. So that work has been ongoing. So again, it's been going on for about a year in our DILT meetings. It's, it was the sole focus this fall, uh, of our DILT meetings. And UDL, which is also part of equity around explore, it's opening up the learning experience for all learners, is starting tomorrow, actually, um, is the next phase of, of that work, but we are focused on equity, um, at those meetings exclusively.
Thank you.
I want to, um, make sure that everyone, every member of the committee has an opportunity to, um, fully explore their questions and comments. So if, um, I'm going to ask each member to ask a question, make a comment, and then I'll come back, uh, to you with a second, per second opportunity, as soon as everyone who wishes to speak has an opportunity to do so. Um, so if you could kind of focus on that one question or comment, I will try to come back to you, um, as soon as everyone's had an opportunity. Michael and then Lawrence?
Um, so do you have a comment to that question? Um, just connecting the dots with Jean's presentation earlier about sort of training non-teacher staff and making it the whole school, you know, and what, I think I heard you say, Mike, in terms of, um, reading portions of the, the book, is, the question is, you can have a great experience in the classroom and have it all blown away in terms of safety and perspective outside of the classroom. So my question is, how are we doing as a school-wide response? Um, but the bigger one, I think, was leading up to you guys in terms of just measuring effectiveness of PBIS, because that stuff that's been brought to us over the last couple of months, so I'd like to know sort of how we measure it and then what we think about it. Didn't want you to come to nothing.
I'm Sarah Whitcomb. Um, yeah, so we've been working the last, uh, we're in our third year now, starting really with elementary schools and then transitioning to middle and high school in our planning and implementation of PBIS. So really about increasing social competencies for kids, having clarity of expectations and a common language amongst all staff, all students in the building, in a, in an attempt to reduce problematic behaviors, disciplinary referrals, um, and also to think about how do we use certain data sources and forms to problem solve around kids that need more support, right? So some of the things that we've been working on, I have a team of doctoral students assigned to each of the buildings, and so some of the things that they're looking at explicitly, um, is the, are the unstructured contexts. So I had a student last year who was working in one of the elementary schools where they really worked to reshape the cafeteria and clarify, what does the environment look like in our cafeteria? Do the kid, are there routines in the cafeteria? What do, do our students know what they're supposed to be doing? Are they up? Are they down? Are they asking questions? And then do our staff, who are typically not teaching staff, aware and, and, um, able to engage in active supervision? So she worked with them explicitly to kind of understand the environment, to help clarify what the expectations were for the environment, and then to provide ongoing professional development for those, um, uh, paraeducators to basically teach them a move, scan, interact protocol where they were really engaging with kids and building relationships with kids and able to kind of rely on the common language of the world. So those kinds of projects are ongoing in different sites, particularly looking at the school-wide, um, linking school-wide expectations to these unstructured environments, as well as to classroom environments. Um, and then in terms of the data, which is like an ongoing project, um, we look at it in different ways. So we have been tracking implementation data over the last three years. We use something called PBIS Apps, which is, um, you can go onto PBISApps.org and look at all the different data sources and the different surveys and things, um, where we pretty much rely on our leadership teams at this point to help us progress monitor, um, where they are in terms of implementation of the various features of PBIS. So we look at implementation data, process data. In terms of outcome data, this is sort of the, the big project that we've been trying to work on. Um, a lot of what we're trying to do this year is help all schools, um, solidify how are they capturing and defining challenging behaviors? What does that look like for them? Um, what are the things that we kind of expect teachers to be managing in their classrooms? What are the kinds of things that we expect other administrative support from in terms of behaviors? Um, and then, um, do we have structures and processes in place for, for teachers to access help that are very clearly defined? So we're working on rolling out all of those pieces so that then we can trust the validity of our data that's recorded in EH, because then ultimately, if we have some really clear systems of data collection and management, we're able to then look at the systems level and do a better job of problem solving, like, wow, I can hypothesize that first grade is really having trouble out at recess, and here are the problem behaviors we're seeing most often. How can I troubleshoot around that?
Yes, that's a quick follow. Real quick, don't want to go long.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess from a district-wide or system-wide perspective, is there an articulated outcome in terms of improved school climate, and then there's defined indicators that people can feed into with the data, or we're not there yet?
I wouldn't say we're there yet, but I think there's some ongoing, um, there's, there's constant dipstick things that we are doing to use the data and make the data more explicit so that we can make decisions from the data. So another example would be, um, figuring out what our teachers, how our teachers, um, experience, experiencing their classroom environment. So one school, um, did a survey, which was called the Classroom Environmental Inventory, and that was, um, able, that would allow the school administration and leadership team to be able to recognize what are the routines, what are the, um, teaching procedures, what are the behavior management strategies that we have in place? Where are there gaps? And looking at sort of the, um, patterns of gaps so that we can target our future professional development. So we have a lot of that, like, progress monitoring data, and I would say in terms of outcomes, what we're hoping to get to is a place where we can be looking clearly at, um, some of the EH data that would encompass both, both kind of like what we'd call major, maybe, safety behaviors, as well as the minor nuanced kind of chronic behaviors that we're trying to problem solve around on a daily basis, to have really good, clear data there so that then we can be able to, um, use it for decision-making purposes and, and make it a really explicit process. And then I think overall, in some of the work that we've, we've done and, um, others have done, I think of Catherine Bradshaw at Johns Hopkins and, um, Rob Horner at the University of Oregon, where they've done large-scale evaluations of PBIS. They've really looked at, um, they've been able to see reduced disciplinary actions, but also, um, increased organizational health. So a lot of climate measures over time are seeing some real improvement in both what I would say the structure within the building, as well as the, the support, the responsive relationships that are in place. Yeah.
Lawrence?
Uh, so thank you very much. The presentation from everybody was great. Really appreciated it. Mine is a very specific question, and, and I don't know who would answer this. Uh, so in my district, uh, our administrators read, uh, their summer reading was John Hattie's book, Visible Learning, which is, as for, in case, it's an aggregation of hundreds of thousands of studies, and with the intent of seeing what's the impact on learning of, uh, various, uh, teacher practice, administrative practices, policies, and what students can bring. And, uh, so I asked to borrow it when, when we had some presentations at the beginning of the year. And one thing that really jumped out at me is, and I'm not exact here, but I believe, uh, when it came to the policy of out-of-school suspensions, his aggregation of the research is that it has, uh, minimal to negative impact on student learning. So my question is, is, uh, why are we, or why is any school district, but why are we continuing to use that as a policy?
You want me to start, and you guys jump in? Um, it's a very good question. I think that we're still a very, um, somewhat traditional school system, as most school systems are in the state and across the country, and we are using things like detention, suspensions, in place of working with our staff to be able to think of new ways of not only preventing, but responding to student behavior. The challenge is, if we, if you take away right now, the things that you have, the only things you have in place, which are very, again, outdated, um, without working on developing staff and other alternatives, um, it's a little bit of a challenge. I think at the state level, we're still waiting to see what they're going to do, if they're going to put a moratorium on suspensions at this moment. I would say, I would think there's a fairly good chance they will. However, they will not, uh, take away the suspendable option for the big items like thirty-seven, eight, thirty-seven, eight and a half, so assault, substances, weapons, um, that sort of thing. But again, I think it's part of the process, and it's about being able to look at, from my perspective, what are logical responses to behavior? And quite honestly, schools have not been traditionally very good at saying, you know, here's, here's the behavior and here's the response. So we're, we're on the path, but, um, hopefully very soon.
Can I ask a quick follow? Just a really quick one. And I don't want to, you know, is it a goal that we're going to eliminate that when we feel that we have more efficacious policies? Is that a goal?
Yes. Yes. If we have something that works to change a student's behavior, um, other than suspension, that's exactly what we should be using.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good luck. So, um, I question, um, concerns to different things. Um, but one is, whatever our discussion of lunch plans and food policy, it really, um, as well as presentations that are coming in public comments, it's really very concerning, uh, the linkage of food to trying to get our students to learn and get our students to regulate their behavior, particularly things like a lunch detention, uh, moving people around, uh, if there's no real safety value to it, uh, to, to eat somewhere segregated, um, because of a misbehavior. Um, I don't know what the data is around lunch detentions or using food as a means of trying to teach a young person how to better regulate their, how to regulate their behavior in a desired way, but, um, uh, unless somebody can show me how that is being done in our district to, uh, to improve, uh, student learning and to improve, uh, and to get the kinds of, of good behaviors, I really would like for us to, uh, address that and kind of take that off the table, uh, once and for all. Um, furthermore, a colleague of mine written a peer-reviewed paper using national data on eighth-grade female students and their English, math, and science teachers to examine teacher receptions of student behavior, such as attentiveness and disruptiveness. Particularly attention in her work is paid to differences in perception by student race and socioeconomic status. In the research, she found that black female students are perceived as less attentive and more disruptive than their white, Hispanic, and Asian counterparts. Concerning for academic performance and socioeconomic status mitigates the differences in perceptions of attentiveness, but not disruptiveness. Sure that the perceptions of attentiveness are significantly related to the probability that a teacher recommends to students for honor courses as well as toward, uh, disciplinary disparities. Um, these, the implications of these findings have been discussed in terms of educational outcomes for black female students. In many of the, what are we doing? I saw many things, but, um, and, and there is, of course, the, the mention of cultural proficiency. But if the, if teacher perceptions are already biased in certain ways, and we're not doing anything to uncover or mitigate those biases, then, um, it seems to me that everything else is going to sort of dash on the, on the rocks. Um, the, the first name of my firstborn son is Mandela, and I pause in this time of his passing and, and to think, yes, in relation to what we're talking about here tonight, this is a local problem, this is a state problem, national problem, indeed, it's even a global problem. But I must confess that being born some forty years after my diva, Mandela, um, I just am, uh, uh, I really struggle to, to, by his example, to try to be more encouraged and more excited by, as the principal referred, white middle-class people making baby steps toward dealing with equity and toward dealing with social justice. It's just not as exciting. But I do try to learn from my diva and, and, and talk, and look at his example to take more encouragement from him. But I really think that, um, we, we have to drill down to the level of what are the perceptions people have of our students, of all our students, and whether we can find ways to, um, uh, to come at it differently, because if someone is dropping your schoolbag, um, and I, I, my hope would be is that the first trigger is not, ah, an inattentive, disruptive student, but rather the first, uh, was, and, and let, therefore let me write up a disciplinary referral, but that the first response is, what is wrong with my, with this child of ours? with my, with this child of ours? What is wrong with this child of ours that is, have been throwing down their bag? Or if they're going to the trash can and already had a problem with the child, is it right at this moment for me to needle them about, be sure to put your things in the recycle bin? And then when they don't do it and throw it all in the trash, then again, I turn to a disciplinary referral. These sorts of stories, you know, really are very concerning and make it hard to be encouraged by some of these baby steps. But, but again, I really hope we can address this question of food as part of a disciplinary strategy and that not make it so.
May I?
You can respond, please.
Yeah, sure. I would love to see all of us be able to, when we come in, in contact with our students during the day, actually be much more student focused and student questioning what is going on for the students. I thoroughly agree with you, Shabazz, that that is where we want all of our teachers to be. And I know I've said it before and I think people can look at it a lot of different ways. I do think human beings are trying to get their needs met during, in an environment. And sometimes we go about it in a way that others might see as problematic. But I think that to come from the adult perspective, that children are children, even if they're eighteen year old bodies and they're trying to get their needs met and we have to be coming from a place of inquiry versus a quick responsiveness. I mean, obviously, if there's a big safety issue, totally different conversation, but I a hundred percent agree with you. I think the challenge for me and honestly, what I've struggled with in our system is, I agree that we have to do a level of awareness for the adults around identifying their own bias and recognizing what it's going to take for them as individuals to be considered cross culturally competent. And I struggle with how you change the internal world of a, of a human being, of an individual. We can, we can do, like when Kathy was talking last time we met, I'm trying to make this brief, but when Kathy was talking last time we met, we can do some level of hopefully assessment of when you're hiring someone, you can do some level of hoping that people are coming in with the beliefs that you want to see with our children in the classroom. Once they're with us, I think it's all about, for me, setting expectations and then observing behavior and holding people accountable for their external behavior. Because I could spend millions of dollars trying to change the internal world of these grownups. And I care about that, but when I talk about children, I care about what they're doing for our kids. So if someone is biased, we all hold our stuff. And they're in that classroom making real connections for, with children and they're not showing disparity between how they're disciplining or they're showing that students are cheating at an equitable level, that's what I want to see. And that's why I feel like I can, I can hold both and, but that's where I can really be held accountable and I can hold them accountable. It's about behavior. But it is about identifying what we want to see adults doing in classrooms and being behaviorally specific so that we actually can hold them accountable. In terms of lunch detention, I don't like lunch detention either. I don't see it in the case that I understand it as withholding food. It's about kids have to lose the social situation of being in the lunchroom, they sit in another room and they eat lunch and they have to do some sort of a processing form. I'm not thrilled with that because I think there are other ways that you can respond to behavior. I think if a student is misbehaving in the lunchroom, that's a natural logical consequence for the behavior. Makes a little more sense to me, same thing if you're misbehaving at recess time, whatever that means, you know, you might have to be sitting out part of your recess time. But I think that it's going to take us a little bit of time to get there. So I guess I'm saying to you that I agree. And we have to do some heavy work as an administrative team to see what we are going to use instead of that option. Because really what we have is during school lunch, after school detention, and suspensions. And that's very traditional. And that's not a commentary on our teachers or our administrative team, it's just where schools are. We have a lot of work to do. And I know it is the baby steps, but I'll ask you to be patient with us because we're going to keep doing it and keep moving forward.
Yeah, I, thank you and thank you, Shabazz, for that. In part because I, in listening to this presentation, I'm just so struck by the, the cultural shift. I mean, Maria, you referred to sort of we have still traditional schools and we respond in a traditional way. And I think about the incredibly significant cultural shift that we're trying to achieve here from so many different directions with the focus being, with, with the focus really being in all this multi-pronged approach, why are, why do kids do certain things and how can we help them get what they need? And access their education and have teachers who know how to help them access that education? So when I think about universal design and differentiation and, you know, helping kids get what they need at school without having to ask for it in way, in direct ways. So, and just how complicated that is and how many ways in which the system is trying to address it is, for me personally, feels kind of overwhelming. And then, but, and my question was actually about react and their recommendations. And if they do make recommendations, for example, to remove certain, you know, out of school suspensions except for, you know, the very, very serious offenses, safety offenses, I guess my question is, what do schools have in place now to help kids stay in classes and access, access the information, you know, access their education? And, you know, so it's been three years and we're still moving forward and, but what's sort of in place now?
I think.
Particularly in the high, middle school and high school.
See, I'll jump in and then other people can please. So, we're in our third year for the elementary schools. So I would say in terms of elementary, we're moving in the right direction of having more interventions that are happening in the classrooms and trying to create space for children when they're struggling and not have to exit, physically exit, the room. In terms of the high school, we've really just begun this conversation in terms of what's in place now. I think what you would see in place is a number of teachers and deans who have positive relationships with children. And often it is about having a conversation in a way that does not, you know, call a student out in the middle of class and allows the student to have their feelings and whatever's going on within that setting. And there are many, many people who do it well. I think the challenge is, is how do you take those skills which are sometimes very, aren't as tangible as you'd like and transfer that to every other teacher that's in the school? And that is the climate shift. I think separate from that professional development, we, we do a lot of conversation, we do a lot of talking, we do a lot of counseling, but not explicit opportunities for, from my opinion, a teachable moment, other than those people who have their hands in the work, which are primarily, you know, our deans who are working with all of our kids every day and doing a remarkably good job. But again, we're talking about a whole shift in culture that has to happen. I don't know if anyone else wants to jump in, but that's, my perception is this is not a quick fix. I wish it were. Please.
Jump in one second about that because when we look at our data, and again, we're just talking about the suspension data, what we see is a need to really teach our staff much, much more about certainly how different students present themselves and whether that's from cultural differences or students with disabilities. We see that loud and clear on the data. So we have a lot of more, a lot of work to do there. We started that, I think both the middle school and the high school have started to have really explicit discussions with all their staff to say, what do you need to know? We're turning to them and saying, tell us what you're struggling with. And I think what Jeanne Fay talked about with the mental health conference of our attempt to really get a very diverse population attending that versus having every mental health professional attend that because they would have wanted to, every, we would have had all of our attendees be mental health professionals because quite frankly, they wanted to hear some of the speakers that were there who were excellent. But instead, we said, no, we're going to send a really diverse group. So we have a lot of education because our students are coming to school with a lot of differences and teachers don't know what to do about that. They've not been trained, they don't know that. And we can't just say we're going to change students, that doesn't make any sense. We need to give people the skills to understand first and then know how to say, I need help versus I need the student out of my class. That's not acceptable.
Can I say something? I also want to acknowledge, probably say this about five times, and I know that both Mark and Betsy commented, that ask our students what works in the classrooms and students can tell us. So it's about translating what works for our kids into actions that the adults can take in helping them to be trained and to be able to use those strategies because sometimes it's very simple. Sometimes it's, you know, stopping and thinking for a minute. So again, it's, it's, it's a very complicated process.
Catherine.
Trevor, you were first.
No, you raised your hand first, I was letting them know that you had your hand before me.
All right. So I just had, I guess it's a common question combo, mostly for the PBIS experts in the room. Thank you for coming and thank you for the presentation. So, I had two things to bring up. One is the, how, how people have been thinking, and I'm sure they have, about the expectations that we have for children's behavior and how those expectations do or don't link up with the ways that we are changing the school day and how the ways that we change the school day may not be developmentally appropriate for our children. So if we are looking at a kindergarten day that doesn't include any play or choice time or unstructured time, if we are looking at a way more sort of sitting down, doing structured academic work and less opportunity for kids to move around that need to move around, not enough time for kids to be in physical education or recess? And so how does, how do we take these things into account when we also have a set of behavioral expectations that we are putting on kids? That's one question I had. And then the second one is, when you go into a school and integrate PBIS, is there a connection for the adults in the school about what the school climate is like for them as a workplace? Because I think about the, the adults that we are expecting to implement these behaviors and sort of, and in many cases, change their behaviors or the ways that they've traditionally done things. And how are we paying attention to how, how can we build their capacity to be at a place where they are actually capable of doing that? Because they are in a workplace which is also a healthy climate for them. And what kinds of ways in this district are we addressing those things?
I can answer some of it. To get to your first point, I should say, prior to this life that I'm in, I was a kindergarten and first grade teacher. And so I was there just as I was experiencing sort of like more academic accountability, you know, kindergarten all of a sudden was first grade and, and, and so that's very real. The expectations are increased and yet development hasn't changed, right? And so I don't know what I have to say about that other than it's a real problem. And I think my whole area of research is actually around how do we teach social and emotional coping strategies and integrate those practices throughout our school day with our kids so that kids are developing some strategies and coping to manage themselves as learners and as social beings within a classroom? And so I wouldn't, I would say that, that I think it's a real challenge and I'm sure that the early childhood folks here in Amherst are really feeling that as well as the middle and high school folks. I would say that in the work that I've done with this district over the last few years, folks are really attuned to that. And so in the planning of PBIS, they're thinking about, well, what do these expectations mean for a kindergartner? And how do I talk to a kindergartner about that? And am I going to talk to a sixth grader a little bit differently? And the answer is absolutely, right? So there's flexibility in there, as there should be, to account for, for development. And then I think the other piece, so the other thing that I wanted to say related to that, and I guess that's also related to your second question about the adults in the building, is a lot of work went into developing the expectations, core values, norms that the schools developed. So many schools went through a period of surveying parents, surveying kids, interviewing kids, interviewing staff, doing all sorts of stuff. I've noticed this district really likes Post-its and does all sorts of Post-it activities about what behaviors would you like to see and let's post them and look for themes, right? But that's a really valuable process. And so I think for that, that really enhanced the readiness of staff in the buildings because everybody's voice was included in that process. It wasn't just, here are the rules, go teach them and kids do them, right? It was a really, it was a norming process, I would say. The other thing is around, so I think some of that enhances organizational health because it gets schools talking about how do we treat one another as adults? And so I think of one of the elementary schools in particular, that's really taken that to, to heart. And so at their staff meetings, they've engaged in norming practices, they've engaged in practices to, to try to enhance positive feedback to one another. And so they've kind of practiced what they're trying to do for their kids. And I think that can be a really valuable strategy. And then outside of the district, I, I've heard of lots of creative ways that schools are doing shout out boards in the, in the staff room that are like anonymous, thank you, Mr. So-and-so so much for helping me out today on this or whatever. And just different ways to, I think the idea is to really help, increase positive feedback and increase support to one another in a variety of ways. And so I think there's probably room to grow in that area, I'm sure. But, but there are some good things that are happening.
If I can, I think it varies also by school at this moment because we're all kind of in a different stage also of the work.
Yep.
So what you may see in one school in terms of the staff meeting work is not happening at another school.
Yeah.
So it's about continuously developing.
And I think a lot of the problem solving that happens at the leadership team meetings is around these issues like, gosh, we really need to figure out how to help staff figure out this piece or do this piece. And, and so there's a lot of problem solving around how do we, and I think it kind of goes back to Dr. Shabazz's comments around how do we kind of teach people about the social emotional interactions, you know? One of the schools that we worked with was really about how do you kind of look at the context and look at the situation and figure out why might that kid be dropping the backpack right now? And what are the range of things, range of ways you can respond? And what are the range of ways that you can help prevent that, that behavior, if it's even a behavior, from happening?
I want to thank you all for your presentation. There's a lot of really good work going on that's really, I think, moved to another level from what I heard, say, three and four years ago. So I appreciate that. My two cents is that the answers lie with the students and the teachers. And so I'm particularly pleased with your work with groups of students and groups of teachers. I mean, simply asking students, why do you think there's this discrepancy? And then asking teachers why you think this is discrepancy and comparing their answers and so they can learn from each other, I think is a great thing. So thank you for, for all your work. One observation I want to make is that everyone who spoke to us tonight was white. And while that isn't in itself a bad thing because I heard great work that's going on, I think it would be bad for those of us who are white not to recognize that when we see it. I'm sure you're involving many people of color in the solutions to these problems and so I trust that's the case, but I just wanted to make that observation. Finally, the one thing that I think is missing is a numerical goal. And I wish we could say that instead of just looking at the discrepancy and saying this is bad and it's been that way for many years, if we could make a goal to say we're going to eliminate the discrepancy in X years or we're going to halve the discrepancy in Y years, that would be great, just like when Just like when you're doing a fundraising event, you put up a thermometer, and you say, this is the goal. I think it's important to sort of, you know, keep us accountable. But I think even more than that, if you, if you put out a numerical goal, it's, it's a, it's really a concrete goal that everybody can be aware of all the time, and always have in their head, hey, we're trying to get here, this is where we're trying to get. So, I just make that suggestion. Thank you.
May I make a statement before Trevor?
Thank you. The, I just would love to say that, Rick, when we have a group sit down and, and talk about measurement, maybe we can ask our UMass partners to come and, and sit with us for a few minutes too, to talk about how they might envision some of those benchmarks for us to include in our measurement report. Thank you, sorry.
So, I am, I'm happy to hear Dr. Brady and, and others finally bring to the table what adults bring to the situation. You know, I didn't really hear that at all from, from Mark when he came up here, describing the high school. It was a lot about the students, what they bring to the table, how to hear their voices, and those kind of things. And at risk of sounding like, I want to speak to folks who have the privilege of looking at it from that perspective, I want to challenge that premise. I look at the arc of this moving from, you know, folks in a community with anecdotal, or what could be described as anecdotal evidence of bias against them, to years ago, a movement to try to codify the data to see if there was a bias against them, to saying, wait, look, there, it might be some bias, it looks like disproportionately, people of color from lower socioeconomic statuses, or different socioeconomic status are, are, are mistreated. And then, jump to the premise that it's the students. It must be the students, you know, disproportionately act up, without taking into account or looking at the fact that, well, I won't call it a fact, the possibility that perhaps it's bias of, 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 of the culture. So, I'm buoyed to hear that, that people are considering that. And I, I, I also would like to explore and hear us been exploring in the past few meetings, ways of putting some efforts into that. It's not easy said and done. One of those ways is by our commitment to diversifying our staff and faculty, and faculty especially. So, that is important to, just as much as emphasis we're putting on this, Dr. Ogletree, that, that our administration also puts emphasis on diverse cultures that our students are exposed to, to see if such things hold up. I think that if we got rid of suspension, if it's, if it's true that there's a cultural problem in our district, and we got rid of suspension, it would just be seen in some other way, shape, or form. So, I, I, I challenge the premise that we could stop suspensions by spending lots of time, effort, and emphasis on teaching students how not, how to behave. And that will mean that nobody gets to see how culturally biased teachers are. They'd be culturally biased in other ways. It would lead to, you know, some students going to college and others not. Some students being sent to vocational schools and others not. Some students being sent straight to wherever. So, I think that, 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 you know, I'm challenging this premise and thinking that, and this is good work, don't get me wrong. You know, socially training our students to be able to cope in, in an environment even that is culturally challenging to them, is a laudable goal, and notable thing we should do. And is, is, no means, am I offering this critique to say that this is not worth doing. I'm offering this critique to say that we should not do this in lieu of examining how, some people call it privilege, class, whatever you want to describe, how that affects our school system. And that we might be addressing a symptom of that problem, and not looking at, 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 at that in and of itself. Finally, I want to say that, I don't know if this finally, I'm looking at all my notes. You know, we want to, our goal is to, like, we had a presentation earlier, our goal is to get our students to be proficient and positive contributors to society. By any means, no matter what their disabilities are, no matter what their socioeconomic background is, and we put, you know, we move as much as we can, heaven and, and high water and earth, to do such things. Ultimately, a test of that, you know, if they are good leaders, they can convince their peers of something. But, an ultimate test of that, and, you know, I will invoke also, you know, Nelson Mandela, who was, who was genius at this, it makes you a great leader if you can convince authority over you of the, the, the point of your arguments, and, and the, the, the use and utility thereof. I want to, kind of, from you as the superintendent, to, to siphon down to the rest of our, our district, that if we are making competent and cultural students, then they are students that can, competent, culturally competent and, and great leaders, they are students that can convince the authority over them, the power dynamics over them, of their case. And notwithstanding us having to protect them, if a student is able to convince you, look, I put down my bookbag, but that's not worth it suspending me, why are you really suspending me? And the teacher now says, you know what, I'm, I'm having a bad day. You know, my mortgage is late, and I gotta do this, and I gotta do that, and I took it out on you, I'm sorry. Then that is a measure that we have, we have taught a child to use their voice the way they should from now on. We've made a child a leader. And to the extent that we can measure that leadership, should be the extent that we are listening and being convinced by our students. So, it's not, and it's a laudable, a good, good thing, Mr. Jackson has put, the past few years, we have recorded student voices and those kind of things. But to the extent that we're responsible, or responsive to them, is the extent we can prove that our students have become the leaders we're training them to be. When we are not responsive to them, when we close our ears and turn a deaf ear to them, then what we've done is really undermine any of the efforts that we have done to try to make them leaders. And not to say that that's what we're doing, but without seeing that it might be the privilege, and not the student activity, we are closing our eyes to what began as anecdotal evidence that there are discrepancies. If we try to, to find evidence of anything but that. We're closing our eyes to that, if we do that, and we're not, we're undermining our, our, our position of making leaders in our community. So, so that's what I want to say. Besides that, this is, this is notable work, but I just always want to flesh out and outline what has to be done with it, and why it's important.
Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to follow up on, on Kathleen's question, just about, because I remember an early presentation of PBIS, and one of the things that I thought was really powerful about it is sort of tracking behaviors over the course of the day. And so, you could really look at the data and see, you know, when, when you were seeing an escalation of behaviors. And it seems to me that that's great data, and that's, it's a great way to get at the, the issue she was talking about. I mean, if you see these behaviors when there's been inactivity, inactivity, you know, you can sort of restructure the day. So, I guess, I'm curious, are we still doing that? Is that still a big part of the PBIS programs that we put into place to help us be more proactive?
So, the answer is that certainly, and I think, and Dr. Wilkman talked about this briefly earlier, is that's the goal. And I think the challenge we're having now, which is a good challenge, just thinking about it as a system, is can we align those definitions and accurately track that data, so that what's happening at Cocker Farm, Wildwood, and Middle School all have, the data's real for everybody? Because I think, when it was school by school, it's a little easier. It's not easy, but it's easier to get those definitions and be able to track that data. But when we're trying to look at a district-wide perspective, when we're looking at some of the disaggregations we looked at tonight, that's more of a challenge, because those people, those adults aren't in the same space very often. So, that's really the work, and, and I was in a meeting last month, last month, with, that, that had wide representation, including Southeast Campus, trying to work on that issue. Can we get to the place of, and, and is it, is the same definition makes sense at the high school as it does at the elementary? And that's, you know, to some extent, an open question. But, that absolutely is one of the goals that we're working towards, and really aligning our work to do that. And remembering, as we shared before, that the secondary school started this process later. So, that work is still ongoing here. But I, I agree that that's, we, we want to make sure that we're accessing data that show us if something's not working for a kid early, so we, the adults, can make changes to support that student's needs, and not wait for... Not wait.
I think Fay wanted to... Sorry.
Thank you.
Mic's falling in the audience.
I just want to add one more statement to that, because we are still using that data collection, it is Educator's Handbook. And some of the places where we're finding it effective, we will sometimes look at an individual student situation, and in terms of in special ed, we will look at our staffing patterns, and what we're doing, we'll make decisions based upon that. And I think at the school level, one of the things that Sarah talked about a little bit, we are seeing interventions that we can do systemically at a school level, that we could look, and I think, I forget which elementary school, but we saw recess at one of the early grade levels, being an area where there was a higher level of referrals in Educator's Handbook. And we were able to really go out there and look, and just give staff some very, very clear, simple directions that an observer could see, or that data could point to, that they could then, the playground personnel could change their behavior, and then we saw the data go down. So, we're making individual steps, but we don't have a broader plate, we're not there yet. We need to be there, though.
Before we go any further, this is an incredibly important conversation that I'm sure will continue throughout the rest of the, at least I hope it does. I want to get the consensus from the committee, it's after ten o'clock. We have one more item that, on our agenda that we have to vote on, and we have a discussion before we vote. I just want to make sure that the committee is comfortable with continuing at this hour. We also have people in the audience who we've asked to stay for quite some time, and fatigue does begin to set in, so I want to respect all of that. What's the consensus of the committee, please? Just a minute. I saw Michael's hand first, and Trevor.
I think Shabazz will forward it.
Maybe ten more minutes, I don't know, to answer your question, maybe ten more minutes.
Is ten more minutes acceptable, Trevor?
I wonder what Dr. Shabazz wants to say.
And I think Michael had something to say.
Ten, ten minutes, so we're looking at ten fifteen, okay? Is everyone comfortable with that? Michael, go ahead.
Go first.
Shabazz?
So, I, I, and I address this to Maria, not to address any of her staff out there, but if you could caucus to get an answer to this, maybe you could caucus. But, you know, and, and it's not to say to try to be ungenerous, I try to be like, like Mandela on this. And, and it's not to be ungenerous. But, I'm hearing the same things over and over from year to year. Do your team need more help? Do we need to write a grant? Do we need to approve more resources for you to get more people in that can help analyze the Educator Handbook data, can help bring real concrete conclusion? I can understand that they're overworked. We ask people to do a million things, and they only got time in the, you know, in a year to do a thousand. But if it's a matter of, on these matters, we, we consider priorities, that you need more resources to move this along, then I would like us to, to hear that, and be able next week, next month, next meeting, to talk about a vote to approve, to, to approve more res... That, that's where, what my sense was in the prioritizing of the budget issues. To make these things happen, and to get up, to get drilling down faster on some, some of the data issues that can enlighten us, as well as on some of the specific kinds of changes to move us forward, to, to, to have the discussion around lunch detention, and saying, look to the staff, we're not doing this anymore, and we're going on to, to try something else, to do something else. To make that happen, do we need more people on the team? And perhaps we can even make a diverse hire out of it, but do we need more people on the team to kind of speed some of this along, is really where I want to drive the question.
Sure.
You want to respond?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. It's, from my perspective, it's not about more people on the team. I think it's about changing adult behavior. And changing adult behavior for the multiple people who are entering data into Educator's Handbook takes time. It's not something you can say, here are the thirty-five different behaviors that you could enter into this, you know, program. And you have to norm what those behaviors are, to make sure that each teacher, or each person who's putting their hand on that data, has a clear understanding. So, it is about having that, the development which we have technical support for, and then allowing people the time to practice it and norm it. I would say, the schools that began in this work three years ago are in a much better place than those who are two years in or one year in. Part of the conversation we've been having recently, that I think we just had with Dr. Ogletree, was, do we at this point say, we're gonna hop back and say, okay, only X number of people actually are inputting information into Educator's Handbook? Because that's a different strategy to say, let's norm, you know, with this smaller group. And I think that probably, we didn't land on it, but we're thinking that's probably where we're gonna go at this point, because I feel your urgency, and I feel the same urgency to be able to, from my perspective, sit at the district level and look at the data. But I need to be assured that you have, I have, we have normed the individual adults, which is the hard part. Do we need money? We always need money. But that's not the issue that's, from my perspective, going to make the difference in inputting data. It's, it is about norming it, and it's about practicing. So, I think the suggestion that we talked about, of pulling back and saying, we're gonna take just a handful of people to put that information in, it's time-intensive in a different way. But, that's where I'm sitting at the moment. I'm sorry. Oh, sorry, Michael.
My, you first, I'm sorry, Mr. Heen.
That's all right. I had three comments that are relatively short, but I think the first one's just sort of reflecting on the conversation and the process, which is, you know, we've talked about it the last few meetings, but this is invaluable. You know, that, you know, it could be that we have a motion about budgets, or we have a motions about suspensions, but I think if we're guiding the superintendent, this is the data that you need to know. You know, it's sort of hearing this and saying, you know, the people who supervise me are telling me that this is important, and then sort of getting it to the system. And so, it just speaks to me that the more this happens, you get more data, we get to sort of, you know, we're the in-between, between the community and the system. And so, I just wanted to say that, because I think, just getting a hesitation and not getting this stuff is not even... Just in terms of following up with Debbie and Kathleen's original point about the, the younger kids, although I try to remind this committee every once in a while, it's a secondary committee, and I sort of indulge in commenting, because I think the response to me is, you know, in the world of accountability and changing things, I mean, my wife is a kindergarten teacher, now she does preschool, so I've seen that transition. I guess I beg the question of, if it's not working for the kids, we don't necessarily have to go along, we have to figure out how to make it work for the kids. And so, you know, I think it's crazy that we don't have recess and unstructured time for people, you know, people who need to move.
Yep.
You know, you learn, everyone knows, if you're around for a little while, you're freed up to, and, and take stuff in. So, I would suggest that, rather than say the universe has shifted, we have to figure out coping mechanisms?
Sure.
I think there's room to say, how do you push back, because we know stuff? And, there's a, there's a feedback loop, if they're gonna behave better and learn better, then that's a hologram to live on, stand on. And then, lastly, I think just in terms of the suspension part, I would say, I mean, as an adult, I still am, but I think as a, a kid, I was someone who questioned authority and power, and...
No.
Yes. So, sometimes it got me in trouble, but the, the thing, I was thinking about it personally, in terms of suspensions.
Yeah.
I don't love the answer of, it's a traditional system, we haven't gotten there, because, you know, to Lauren's point about it being negative, you know, if it's, if it's neutral, you can live with it, or it's negative. And so, if I imagine myself in second, fourth, whatever grade, or even now, if you know that you have power, someone has power over you, they can say all the nice things they want, but if they're gonna sort of like slam you, and like, you're gonna get suspended, whenever you process that and you disengage.
Right.
And you're very clear what the power dynamic is, and where your lines are. And so, I would say that we can do all the positive stuff, as long as that hammer is at the end, where they can kick you out in some way, that stays, and that's what people internalize, especially kids that are powered and epic in school setting. And so, the longer it's in place, the...
Yeah.
So, I, I would say, you know, I get that you can't replace it, but I would say, maybe we get rid of it and come up with something, even if it's not the answer? Because it, it just seems like it's undoing stuff. The good intention gets undone.
I think Mike.
I just want to clarify, respecting Michael's comment, this is a regional meeting, but all of our elementary kids have recess every single day. I don't want there to be a misunderstanding.
Oh, I said middle school in that regard.
No, 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 that's fine, but I just, I think, I just want to clarify, people may be watching this on TV, and I don't want anyone to have a misunderstanding. And no one here said it, but I just, I could imagine watching this on TV and coming to the conclusion.
And suspensions are a really different conversation, elementary versus secondary.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, but I just, I just don't want anyone thinking that their five-year-old is not getting recess every night.
We all have to run.
That's far from, far from the reality, that's all.
Trevor, your last word.
So, you know, I tried to get through all my points, I forgot the most important, very last point, which you guys started to pick up on, which was the defined outcomes. As a, as a body now, I think I've counted at least three people that, you know, would like to see better defined outcomes. I, I think Mr. Hood, Dr. Shabazz, myself, and I, so that's at least four people. And I, I'm, I'm asking, I don't see a reason why you can't have, or there shouldn't be, a rubric for what causes suspensions, or what, you know, different actions happen that you can check off, and that be some data points as to, you know, this kind of behavior happens.
Sure.
You mentioned the most egregious of errors, that even if the state changes suspension laws, they wouldn't change, you know, if a child is dangerous to other children, they have to be removed from the building. So, clearly, that would be in the rubric.
Right.
But somewhere in the rubric would be something like, you know, a child was disrespectful, and so, some teacher suspended him. So, now this begs the question, oh, now you can dig into the data, are, are, you know, poor children more disrespectful than, than other children?
poor children more disrespectful than, than other children?
Right.
This child was, was, was suspended because, um, um, they cursed in a hallway. Well, let's look at the data.
Right.
You know, i- in other words, I don't think it is, it is too much to, to ask, or too, um, much splitting hairs to have a rubric for, uh, 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 being able to determine, and I, you know, this is gonna be controversial, but I don't mind saying this, being able to determine what teachers are describing suspensions at a lower threshold than others, and being able to evaluate teachers of, you just, you really suspended ten children because they all cursed you out? Well, does that mean that ten children are, are, are bad behavior children, or that you get children a curse? You know? That's a question that, you know, as controversial as it might be to ask, ought be asked. Is this a, 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 a teacher that professional credentials should be questioned because they always encourage, or the outcome always ends up being a student being suspended? You can't ask that question when there's no rubric for why a student was suspended, it automatically falls to the teacher had the power and suspended.
May I, so Sarah wants to say something, she's jumping out of her seat. I want to go next, and then you can go next.
I, I just want to clarify, um, that that's exactly, exactly what educator's handbook does for us. So I think part of the, the work is like norming the process and the behavioral definitions, but what's great about it is it's a decision-making system that's really explicit, so that you can identify what are the problem behaviors, who are the kids that are engaging in the most frequent problem behaviors, um, who are the highest refers, teacher refers, what time of day, where is it happening, and really drill down so that you can look at the data. So that's why we're working through this process and really, um, um, trying to take steps to do it well, so that we can have reliable and valid data from which to make those decisions.
What I'm describing is the other side of that data. So this data says how bad the student behaved.
Yep.
But I'm saying, are we collecting the data for how many teachers?
Yes, we are.
Yes, yes, yes.
So we can, we can collect what teachers refer.
Yes, may I?
So, yes, we are. And before we can really, um, one of the, take ten steps back, we have to define what is disrespectful. So those are the kind of things that you have to norm with your staff, because one person's disrespectful is not another person's disrespectful, and that's where you may see the lens of bias all over the place, if you haven't normed those behaviors. So that's part of when we're talking about norming behaviors and putting that in the system, because then we can, we can identify where people need, and I'll put the positive frame, more development. And if they have more development, if they're not changing behavior, then we have an issue. Secondarily, I'd love to say that teachers don't suspend.
Okay.
Principal suspends. And, and deans, goes to deans first, deans do an investigation, then it comes to principal, principal makes determination. So there's a whole process, teachers are fairly far removed from that level of decision-making. Also, um, the last thing I wanted to say is that committee that we're, that we are doing is the after-action review, which is gonna help us to really dissect exactly some of what you're talking about. Why did this happen? So this student dropped a backpack, this teacher did what, and then the student did this in response to the teacher saying X. It allows us not only to develop, to, to look at our behavior as adults, but also to look at where in that process or that sequence might we have done something differently, or did we follow it just the way we, we want to see happen? So it allows us to learn and to kind of basically have a little bit of a rubric, and you can say, what the heck is this doing in front of us? Or no, good job. Um, and then, again, look at the larger system. So I think we're, we're talking about this in multiple levels, but we're trying to hit all angles.
Mr. Jackson, I think really wants the last word.
So here's my contribution as we wind out, hopefully. And I know I'm prolonged. So I, so here's what I want to do, I want to pull the tension as tautly as I possibly can. Right? If the, if the conversation tends to skew in one area, we lose the full range of considerations that we're asked to entertain if we're gonna, if we're gonna move the organization forward. So, so I want to make very cautiously, tentatively, a pro-suspension case. Can I do that and ask you all just to hang in for a second?
Of course.
Legislative session.
And we're stuck here.
So.
There are times.
So, so, and, and so I said that in like a little kind of provocative way, because I, I want, I want to train tension, I, I want to train your attention on a set of behaviors that are secondary in nature, right? So high schools, because kids are older, right, they have access to more things, they drive, they have money, they have choice, they're not under parental supervision all the time, they get into things.
Yes.
Right? And they're also bigger, and sometimes they resolve their issues with their fists.
Mm-hmm.
So let me pose a couple hypotheticals to you, right? If my child, if your child walked down the hall and was assaulted because somebody hit them.
Then he took a home.
Would you agree that the next day in math class, your child should sit next to the child who just punched them?
Hmm, no.
Right? If said child also was found to have a backpack full of neatly packaged little bags that had an organic herb in it, right, and was making money in the bathrooms, and that child was found to have done that, and was found to have done that in the presence of younger kids who watched those transactions, right, I'll, I'll ask and answer the question, right? In my judgment, that child needs to be separated, because they have contributed to the sense of insecurity on a fairly profound level in the building. Right? My commitment to the other eleven hundred kids is to provide a safe environment, but somebody introduces a destabilizing force like that, I don't know how to soft pedal a response. The third thing, and Fay's, Fay's made a couple references to thirty-seven H, which is, which is a very helpful thing to schools, right? You introduce weapons, you assault faculty member, you, you introduce the sale of drugs, right? We're in a different category. So, so if it, if it, students put hands on adults, if they assault adults, right, I'm very hard-pressed to say to that adult, you should be able to come and have that kid sit in front of you the next day, right? And so we could parse all those examples in a variety of ways, but I want to, again, stretch the tension and keep it taut. There's a class of behaviors that high school students, larger students, older students have within their capacity to execute that are profoundly destabilizing to a school environment.
Absolutely.
Right? Suspension in those measured, carefully drawn, faithfully, or fairly inconsistently applied situations require that kind of outcome. And, not or, and, the kinds of situations that Trevor was describing of, 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 of very different notions of, of, uh, uh, different culturally understood notions of power, of respect, all those need to be parsed at a very deep level, because they often end up escalating situations, and end up exposing in ways that they don't need to.
Exactly.
Right? Both of those broad set of behaviors and circumstances are true, and I'd like us to live in that tension as the conversation goes forward.
Which we do every day.
Can I just ask a quick question? Can I just ask?
Um, we're already, um, already ten minutes. I, I.
I'll email you. Yeah, well, I just want to ask you, like, oh, yeah, you're.
Forgive me, but, um, we do have one more item on the agenda, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you.
And it does require a vote. But before everyone packs up, thank you very, very much, and I do hope we will see you again before June.
Thank you all, thank you all. While you do this, this is very fast, I just want to say something.
Actually, the next item is kind of related to this discussion.
Right, the next item is about.
Um, and, uh, I, again, I apologize to members of the committee for cutting the conversation off, but I, I do want to get on to this last item, which I think should be brief. But, um, you should have received, um, not in your packet, but just prior to the beginning of the meeting, a, an alternate version of the memo that we were going to send to Glenn Kuchar. And I'm gonna ask Michael, if you would, I believe you are the author of the revised version.
I am.
If you would speak to it, please.
Uh, well, it was mostly approach. I mean, it seemed like, what I, what I wrote to Debbie and Maria was that MASCE is a statewide organization, and for us just to speak to our district, it's, you know, they're not gonna go to Baffin District, they're gonna speak to statewide, um, priorities and things that are consistent with ESE, so starting with the framing of.
Mr. Jackson, shh, walk, please.
Too much tension.
Sorry, everyone, I apologize.
So all I, all I always wanted to do is frame it in terms of statewide perspective, that I think it's motivation both for MASCE and to sort of harken back to what apparently ESE is saying itself as a priority, and then saying, we as a district among, you know, three hundred plus districts applies, so that's, that's most good.
Um, the language that we had originally was not something that we had voted on, we simply voted on the concept of a resolution. So it's not as if we're amending anything. We might actually consider Michael's revised statement the version that would be the form of a motion. So I would entertain a motion, um, we have the original that, I'm gonna thank Debbie for authoring, um, but we also have Michael's revised version with his explanation, so I will entertain a motion.
One second. What's the name?
Go ahead.
Do the motion. Um, and one of the things, thank you, Michael, for, for doing this, and one of the things I had suggested to Debbie to, um, strengthen it even further was that the original version had it just from the regional school committee, and I suggested that it be from all three school committees, just to sort of add that, so that's also different from the original version.
Thank you.
You can achieve two tonight, how about Pelham?
Um, Rick.
I moved approved the letter to Glenn Kuchar with a caveat that the date be changed to December tenth.
And are you, are you referencing Michael's revised? Is there a second?
Second.
Deb.
Comment. Um, Pelham can't vote on this until January, so that's just the reality, and, and if it is gonna be all from all three committees, which I think is great, that language ought to be changed, where it says the Amherst-Pelham Regional School Committee supports this.
Amherst-Pelham and the Amherst-Pelham Regional School.
And does Amherst have the same situation, we're all here.
Amherst could actually vote.
Yeah, we can vote on it.
You can send three different letters.
Can't vote, can't vote tonight, because we didn't.
Do we have to wait?
Right, 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 thank you, we need next week.
So, um, as it stands, then, what we're going to do is we're gonna send a revised, if this motion passes, it will go to the Amherst and the Pelham School Committees with the revision in the second paragraph, that it's the Amherst-Pelham Regional School Committee, the Amherst School Committee, and the Pelham School Committee. Is that correct? Am I?